Good evening and welcome to the April 6, 2023 County Brookfield's Upward Meeting. All eyes to say what?
One allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which is saying, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
So, um... For any residents trying to enter the town hall, please do not enter until the construction directly in front of the town hall is complete. Handicap ramp to the back door is easily accessible. Go ahead and approve the warrants for FY 2320, the tolling of 29, 133.68, payroll of 185, 243.73, and FY 2320 AP warrant of $280,978.16.
Remove. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, so the first item is going to be the equity policy post community approved procedure. Kelly, you can take your time.
Yes, please. So, under the new law that was recently passed, the cannabis control commission is requiring towns that do not currently have any post agreements to have a social equity policy in place prior to entering into the community. If we had any that were already in place, then we would have a window of coming compliance. But as we do not, and you've entered into discussions with a potential applicant, you're required to have a social equity policy in place. So, you have before you a combination of the two. I had written this one and sent it off to KP, who then wrote legislation and sent it back as a policy, which I took the policy part and plugged it in here. You also have... Do you copy that one as well? I think I also printed... So, you need to review it. So, this is what they're recommending, and I'm also recommending is that for a minimum of either a year or months, that you're going to reserve one marijuana retail post community agreement for applicants who are controlled by and with the majority ownership comprised of certified economic empowerment priority applicants and/or social equity program participants. You don't want them to have to be both just in case you have an applicant that isn't. They would wind up not meeting the requirement because they're not in both categories. Now, this is the rubric that the state has on how to become one of these. We do not have to figure out who is and who isn't. They have to meet the state rubric, which is on the CCC's website.
And then, like, how many post community agreements have been within the community act?
You can have as many as you want. So, it depends on the number of licenses. One town that I'm aware of had two retail licenses and two legal bachelor licenses. They had four applicants. So, it was first come, first served in that particular situation, who have got their proposal first and met all the bells and whistles, got first yes, first in lines, first in time.
How did they establish that number of licenses?
They did it at town meeting.
Ah, okay.
So, they had those licenses. And what they did was they put a stipulation in the host community agreement that if you do not have been able to attain your license from the CCC within... They were going to say six months, but it takes like two years for a license. It was a bit less, we small enough. Then, the license would then become available to the next applicant. That was something in their particular process for that town. Now, there are other towns that will enter into host community agreements with everyone who comes before them, absolutely everyone. And whoever the CCC approves first gets a license. But because we have the social equity situation where they're trying to rectify those who've been disretributed and impacted by the criminal marijuana laws, they're asking that we put something in place to give those people priority. And so, that's what this policy is for. You're not required to withhold a license forever if you only have two licenses.
Right.
You are entering into host community agreements does not actually need to be contingent on the number of licenses you have. But it makes sense to make them coalesce.
Right.
Now, I don't know, A, if the amendment to the bylaws will pass, or if it limits the number of... If it does, does it open up the number of licenses or does it limit the number of licenses? They're the same thing.
The current bylaws, it doesn't state anything about licenses yet?
Yes. You have two retail licenses available. That's it. And I think one, is it one medical license available?
I don't remember.
You know, I've got a computer. I'll just sweep it off.
You might have saved a full copy.
I will just pull up a copy of this in my lap for you to sort on, please. No, no, no town will go to half the back. Thank you. I want to be welcome to half the back.
Section 8.
Uh, thank you. I almost felt it like I just let you do it. Let's keep working smaller and smaller than that. Alright, we have a lot of H35. So, under section 8, we have definitely two retail licenses.
Okay, so two retail licenses.
Yeah. This is my goddamned device for computers. So, the post community agreement process is based on... What a hard line it is. We have no restriction because it was not stated on cultivation. You can have some medical cultivation since it's within the town that you would wish to get or as they initially did. I mean, it's hard to find. It's all...
And the marijuana, marijuana, although it doesn't apply to cultivation?
Correct.
No, I believe it does.
Well...
Everything is possibly changing.
Well, it does. It does apply to cultivation. Like, you have to still need the same zone. You have to still be in the MOD.
So, you have to be in the MOD.
But licensing itself is not mentioned.
I think whatever we adopt should be consistent with the current bylaw and looking ahead to the fact that the town may approve some changes.
Well, I think what we want to do, and I think I'm going to basically restate what you just said, but I'm going to just...
Go ahead.
...use it in my words, which is, it sounds like what we need to do is deal with the post community agreement as the bylaw stands today, with the understanding that we should probably just ask for at least a... Ask the planning board for like the in-process status of the...
They voted it last night. They did vote it last night. There might be an amendment to it because there was... More information has come to like that require a change. It's not a substantive change though that will change the bylaw itself.
But let's get a...
If they choose to do that.
I mean, in my head, we do our... We do the social equity policy. We have to do that figure out.
Mm-hmm.
We start the post agreement process based off of our current bylaw.
Mm-hmm. And then, it says right at the bottom that it's subject to change at any time.
Right.
Because it's just a process. It's not... It's just how you get before the board and you get in line to get post community agreement.
Right. And our social equity policy likely will change when the bylaw changes because it will potentially change the number of licenses that will make available. So, the articles along those MOD...
So, we want to plan to revisit the social equity and the HCA process.
No, you don't want to revisit the social equity. That is irrelevant to the bylaw.
Well, if our license number changes, would it matter?
Well, yeah, I suppose because it says we're doing this because of the limit on licensing. But you can take that language out and just make it that we're before one license aside. It doesn't have to be subject... It doesn't have to be based on the fact that we only have two.
Yeah. I guess my point is that we should plan to revisit this in July and say, based on the new bylaws, do we need to make any changes to our social equity policy or HCA process to reflect those bylaws? And that way, today, we focus on today's bylaws and we plan to amend our processes and procedures to better fit with any changes that happen to the bylaws at ATM in June.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, that does. They're retroactive, but they're not actually bylaws until they're approved by the attorney general. And they are not usually approved until October. But they are retroactive to the date of the vote, so...
So, we could update our policy based on the expected changes.
Yes, you absolutely could. So, what you have is a limitation on the number of marijuana facilities and related special permits. And the paragraph reads, "No more than two adult-use marijuana retail establishments and no more than one medical marijuana treatment sent to a retail dispensary shall be permitted in the town program." That is a very flat definitive statement. An applicant may be granted a special permit that allows for a combined operation of one adult use and one medical marijuana, but no single applicant shall be granted more than one special permit for operating a marijuana facility. So, nobody can open up a chain of another town, basically, I think is what that's telling you. So, you need to decide how long you want to... If you agree with these, how long you want to hold them? How long you want to keep this open? You have two licenses. Do you want to hold one back for a year?
I mean, fundamental is what I was thinking.
Is this... Does this...
I was thinking you can hold back one for a year and for... But for a minimum of five years when there's multiple applicants considering the social equity.
Yes, I mean...
Do you get what I'm saying?
Yeah, that makes sense. Given what Kelly said about the timeframe of getting a license, one year is a lot shorter than the license acquisition.
Maybe two years.
So, I guess my question is, with the thought being that after that one, it's like they have a year to start the process with us and if they get it in, then their priority is reserved even though this provision then sunsets for new applicants. I think that's... I would be comfortable with that interpretation. And if we need to modify the language or clarify it, we can do it.
So, if it takes effect today, that license is held suspended for only a social equity or for a empowered priority applicant for 365 days from today. If you don't get any of those applicants, then you need to revisit it and make it extended. Or it becomes available to who in the town applies. If you have any applicants in the interim in between that, then it's really sweet. Sorry.
Just trying to make sure. Put this in the wrong... In the right direction here. Is that better?
Yes. Well, step away from it, maybe.
Be back. It might be... Can you rotate the speaker from the other?
I'm sorry.
That's okay. You're not inside the technology. You don't know what it's doing. It's niggas.
This is definitely the knob, but...
The unity of... The only thing I can suggest is... Turn these down. Is that down or up? Probably mine.
Isn't that odd? It hasn't done it at the other meetings. Anyway.
It's new.
Onward and upward here. So, I did... If you look at the social equity policy, you'll see a highlighted section. I didn't add that, but I left a space for it if you want to add it. But I don't think that you should be waiving any fees because this is exorbitantly charged by town council. And I don't think that the residents should have to pay for legal counsel for someone to get a host community agreement. I think the applicant should have to pay for that.
Can I agree with that?
Yeah.
My question in regards to that is, so step two, that fee is $4,000?
So, that's up for grabs. And I base that on the last three host community agreements that I was entered into with KP, and that was four years ago.
Right.
And it was $4,000. One of them wound up to be $6,000. And the town ate the difference because they didn't get enough.
Yeah.
So, that number is a placeholder. You may decide whatever. But town council's going up to $360 an hour for host community agreements, which is double what they charge... Oh, a little less than double what they charge us.
Yeah.
For regular legal work.
So, I have a question. I'm not in favor of waiving fees for EEA and, you know, whatever for the social equity. But I'm wondering if maybe we don't set it at $4,000 for those applicants and $6,000 for all others. Is that allowable? Can you have a sliding scale?
You know...
Or can you...
I think you're kind of... Because it was put in by KP for the social equity policy, I don't think that it's illegal to do it. I don't think that... They're already getting preferred treatment.
Okay.
And I think, my personal opinion is that's enough. If you've got two applicants and you're comparing apples to apples and one is social equity, the social equity wins just because of their demographic.
That's true, okay. So, then...
So, the fee should be the same.
$4,000, $5,000, $6,000?
And you can set it so that it's up to $6,000 and whatever is not used, we can return to the applicant as well. You can also add that to it. You can also...
I'd rather be more comfortable doing that.
Yeah. Yeah. Is that if it's done for less than that, that the balance is... Is the actual cost.
So, set your fee and then we'll just add that language to it.
And the intent is this would cover the...
Here's you want to say $7,500.
It's just a... Well, I don't know. It appears that it... So, at the time that they were doing the $4,000 one, they were charging $200 an hour and up $360.
Right.
So... But they were also charging the towns $125 an hour.
Yeah.
And now, we're bumping up to close to $200 an hour.
Everything is...
Yeah. We are... I think we are going to $200 an hour proper KP. So, figure they've got a lot more experience under their belt and...
Yeah, they're going to take...
We can get samples from other towns to run before you rather than engage them in... Just give them the final and tell them, "Do not..." And I've had to do this before. "Do not make any non-substantive changes. I'm not interested in your personal preference in grammar and punctuation."
So, that was a pretty good guess, though.
I know.
Because actually Brad's math was pretty spot on because if you divide by 200 and multiply by 386, it's actually 7720. So, $7,500 would be the equivalent in legal hours if we were to do that. And then, but return anything that we can manage to save.
Yes. Okay. So, that's not part of the social equity policy.
No, I know.
So, let's finish that and then we'll hop on down to the process.
So, I think for the social equity policy, it sounded like we had alignment on minimum of one year, minimum of five years for preferential treatment.
Don't waive the fee.
Don't waive the fee. And so, can I get a motion?
Oh, I have a question first. On number two, I have a hypothetical. Let's say that we had on the agenda today a... The intent to... We had an HCA agreement with an applicant. It had been through the lawyers. Everything was ready to go and is on the agenda to be discussed. At 4:00 this afternoon, an SEP licensed applicant who is competing for that same last license slot submits their paperwork. Would that last-minute application, then, under this policy, short-circuit that one that we spent all that time working through? Because it does say give priority. And I don't know how much leeway we have to say, "Yeah, you would have priority, but we're signing the contract this afternoon."
So...
It's an extreme example, but it illustrates...
So, you've already issued one license? Is that what you're saying? You're already working on the one left?
In this case, there are two... Yes, in our... Yeah, in this case, there's only one license left.
Okay.
And so, therefore, it is... And... Let's see. Yeah, there's only one license left.
I don't think that it would have to short-circuit it because I think that you would need... You would need a cutoff at what point in your host community agreement process. So, you're already reserving it for a year, right?
Right.
So, we know that that license is held in reserve. This wouldn't actually affect anything till after the year is over.
Right, I understand. But after the year is over and...
So, you would only have social equity applicants on the second license because you're reserving it?
No, but after the reserve period ends, that license opens up to anyone.
Right.
And so, let's say that we... There's... And in this example, we have two licenses. One has already been granted. We are very close to signing the host agreement for the second license. And then, while this preferential access clause is still in effect, someone comes in with their application before... Just before we execute the host community agreement with a non-SEP applicant who is... Has access to that license because the clause one reservation period has expired.
I would say that they're first in line in that if you're at the point where you're signing the host community agreement, that they shouldn't be able to derail it. So, we would need some kind of language. But unless you want them to... I mean, if you want that to be... That's a really good scenario. That's really good forethinking on a possible...
Yeah, I mean, to me, it's one of those... It's unlikely that two applicants, one SEP, one non-SEP, are going to come in on the same day at the same time. So, effectively, one of those two is going to come in front. If it's the SEP applicant comes in front, well, they got their first... Their first in line.
I would say once you're actually entered into negotiations, that's the cutoff. So, you've got this whole process they have to go through, right? So, if you look at the process, they've got to come and do their presentation. They've got to fill out all of the paperwork. They've got to make sure that we have everything that we're supposed to. We need the demographics. We need legal authority for them to actually use the property that they're purporting to be able to set up their establishment. Once you've accepted their proposal, that's an implied... You would not be acting in good faith if you accepted their proposal under step two. See, it says, "Once the selectmen have voted to accept your proposal, that is just a matter of negotiating the agreement." So, I would say, once that you've locked that license, once you... Until you finish the negotiations, with the negotiations go belly up then.
Yeah. At that point, the license is, for want of a better term, being held for intention so that we can complete the negotiation of the HCA for the applicant.
Yes.
And if that process falls apart, then there could be a queue of people waiting for that... For their kids to come in.
So, for example, we had a gentleman in one town who had intended to purchase a property and he had all the paperwork from the owner that they could do everything they wanted. And he came in for the agreement and they voted to adopt his proposal and then his property fell through. He found out it didn't have the requisite commercial fire suppression and he didn't buy the building. So, that freed up the license again. Except, the way they... It should have freed up the license. But except the way they wrote it, he had... He's the one who had the like year and a half to get his license and then it came back up. So, they locked that license in. So, that's something that we're going to have to be careful of. But I would say we could add to step two that once the selectmen have voted to accept your proposal, this will lock the license through negotiation process.
Yeah. Until negotiations are complete, whether successful or not.
Yes.
Okay. I think that's reasonable and sufficiently explicit that no one can come in and say, "Hey, yeah, I know you're almost done negotiating with these guys, but I get preferential access. You need to now start talking to me."
Yeah.
And it's one of those... I don't think that's a very likely scenario, but always better get the language to handle it so it's clear rather than having to break out the lawyers and...
That's good.
Deal with the scrum.
Yeah, no, that is. That is a really good thinking ahead. At which time the license will be released for a new applicant, right?
Yep. And then, the next applicant in the pipeline, that's where the policy would kick in again.
Yep.
Is that if we had multiple people in the queue, then we'd pull forward the...
You would pull forward anybody with it?
Yeah. As part of the...
I'm not crazy. I did print it.
Kelly? In step one, do we want to state that if we receive an application and there is not an available license, the application will be held pending a license becoming available on a first-come, first-served basis subject to our priority review clause? In the social equity... Subject to our social equity policy?
Well...
And just make it clear that...
If you don't have a license to offer, why would you do that?
Maybe someone wants to get... Be first in line in case that falls through.
Well, that's up to the board. That's what we'll do.
If they want to submit it, or do we think that...
Well, and Kelly, but Kelly, that... I don't know if we need that because didn't you say that there's a lot of communities out there that might have more host agreements than licenses?
Yes.
Yeah. So, I mean, this is about the host agreement process.
If somebody wants to go ahead and go through the process, even though we don't have a license available, it's a free country. They want to pay $7,500 and.
That we hold inequity.
That we hold inequity until the agreement's done, then.
Yeah.
I don't know that we need to stop it, because that way, hate to put it this way, if you stack them up like cordwood, and when your licenses are available, and people can open their facilities.
Mm-hmm.
But you only have one license to do that with, unless they're a social equity person, so.
Right. I'm just, the fact that they, the town meeting may change the number of available licenses, and so, just thinking ahead, but we can also revisit this in the summer.
Yeah, and honestly, it doesn't matter if they give us 10 licenses at town meeting, we're still just going to hold one for the social equity candidate.
Yeah.
It doesn't actually change this, it just, it lowers the impact versus the licensing process.
Yeah, I mean, it's like, if they give us 10, we could decide to hold a second, but we don't have to.
Right.
So, I'll wait until we see how many licenses we have, before I think about what we want to change it to.
Cool.
Let's see, all right, so.
I do like that other ad that you had about making it explicit that once we're in negotiations, that's, that's it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Do we want to have Kelly write this up based on our discussion, and then adopt it formally at our next meeting, or do we want to try and get something locked down?
Well, we need to get it the 20th, right?
Yes.
It's six of one, half dozen of the other.
Okay.
You can do it pending the amendments to it, and then, because it takes, you're not going to sign it, you just need to vote it the way it is, and then I can send it out to you, and if anybody sees something that needs to be corrected.
We can always revote it.
You can send it back and vote if we voted, or if you think of something else. You can just throw it on the agenda for next time.
What, if it gets written up in a way that wasn't quite what we thought?
Yeah. So my recommendation, we would vote it as amended.
Mm-hmm.
Get the actual draft out with the verbiage, and then if there was any concerns or objections, let's go ahead and put it on the agenda for next meeting, and then if we need to revote it, we can.
I'm good with that.
That way, it's in place.
Yeah.
But.
I don't, I don't see, I don't see us passing this unleashing a torrent of applicants.
Yeah, we haven't exactly had people beating the door down to get into Brookfield for this particular issue.
Right.
So you've got one year and five years.
Yep.
And we're not putting in number three, the policy takes effect upon passage. So just the social equity portion, is there anything else you want on the social equity portion? Because you can vote that just the way it is, because all the amendments you've made are to the marijuana host agreement process, which is subject to change at any time, because it's just a process. You can change it any day.
I thought Tom's recommendation was, was for a change in number two to the social equity policy, which indicated that, that if the, if the, if there's, if we were already in host agreement negotiations, that people want to be pulled ahead in line.
Oddly enough, that corresponds with number two on the process, and that's where I put my notes. So I didn't realize you were talking about the social equity, but I dropped them off the process.
I think, I think we can handle it through the host community agreement process, because I think that, I think that just makes it very clear in our HCA process, how the social equity policy affects that.
Never mind, I misunderstood.
We can put it in both places.
No, it's, I'm fine with it, just, let's, let's vote the social equity policy as is and put that edit to, to our process.
Okay.
If that's where, that's where he intended it, and I'm agnostic, I just, I would like to see it somewhere.
That's where I put the notes, just because I didn't realize that they both number two.
They link, we could have addressed it through either.
Either one. It's an easy, it's an easy confusion to have, so let's, so can I get a motion to accept the social equity policy as written, with the edits of one year and five years, respectively?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yay, social equity policy in praise. One thing to tick off the box for the CCC. They haven't given us any guidance whatsoever, and they're not required to provide guidance until, I believe, November, maybe, no, it's the fall, I'm not sure if it's October or November. And we may have to change it when they give us guidance. They may say, no, that's not what we want, you have to do it exactly like we tell you, and then we'll just have to come back and change it again, but it needs to be in place now.
But we now have something that we can move forward against.
Yes.
And if we have to adjust it, we adjust it.
So before we go too far on this, because I hear Peter's radio going.
I know, that's what I was going to say.
Did we bump them up? No, you all set? Okay. All right, so now for the host agreement process, and I don't know if you've had an opportunity to, to read it when I sent it to you on March 17th, but I think I transferred all the information onto this one document, the way it showed up in the email that I sent you. And again, this is just a working document, and I put Tom's request for, once this step two takes place and the proposal is accepted, it will lock the existing license in question until the success or failure of negotiations, or until negotiations have ceased, and then, and you wanted to change it to how much, 75 or?
7,500.
And that can always be changed.
Yeah, it can, and like I said, I have to talk to the board about how we can.
I mean, if we lose the first one, we'll just, we have it up to the second one.
Yeah, and, and, and I think the, the big thing there is just, I think we do want to put language in there fundamentally, that if, if the town's actual legal expenses are less, then.
We'll return it.
We'll return the balance.
The only issue with that is, we may have to just hold the check until everything is done.
Right.
And just pay town council out of our pocket, because any check that comes in, that doesn't have a special account to go into, goes into the general fund, and we can't then just turn around and cut them a check.
That's fine.
So there's some accounting and payment issues that need to be addressed for that, but we could put in, we could vote a revolving account in this special town meeting, and 33 E and a half.
Let's do that.
Or maybe it's E and a third. Anyway, regardless.
Oh, because the problem is, if it takes too long, you might not be able to cash the check, is what you're getting at?
No, if we, if we put the money in the bank, we have no way to give them back their money.
Right.
We don't have a.
That's what I'm saying, and we can't hold, if we hold the check, you can only hold the check so long anyways.
Well, it's just until the host community agreement is signed, and that doesn't take six years to do, that takes weeks.
Mm-hmm.
You know, maybe a couple of months. So.
Yeah, so I do it for.
For 90 days to a year, depending on the check, but we may be able to do a revolving account, just so that we can pay people back. If there's an extra, we can dump it in there.
Let's, let's pursue getting a revolving account for those.
That way, we can refund people as quickly as possible.
And so, so basically, would we, would we just put as a footnote in step two, that if expenses are less than 7,500, or if town expenses are less than 7,500, balance will be returned to the applicant?
Yeah.
Yeah, upon conclusion of negotiating, negotiations. We want to make, just to make it clear that.
In case it winds up in a revolving account at some point, let's just say something along the lines of within 60 days of the completion of the host agreement.
That's fine. That language will cover if, if, say, the, pardon, the applicant withdraws and says, we're not going to do it, it's like, and we've spent, say, $1,000 on legal fees.
It's non-refundable that way, they don't get to take it back. If we've already started spending money on it, they don't get to take it back.
No, but my, my question was, if they've given us, if they've paid the $7,500 application fee, and we've spent $1,000 of that money on legal fees, and then they withdraw, would be the intent be to refund them the balance, the 6,500?
No, it's if we complete it, and it's completed, and it's, say, we only spent 5,500, because we use a boilerplate, and it doesn't take as much review, then, then we would give them $2,000 back. But if somebody withdraws, that's on them, they, they eat the fee.
Okay. I guess my, my concern is, some people could feel that they're withdrawing because we're being unreasonable, and then they're saying, and now you're sitting on my money, and so I, I'm just, I'm concerned about that angle.
In other locations, it is a non-refundable fee.
Period.
Period, game over.
We're being nice.
You gave us money, we're going to spend it on legal fees, if you withdraw, it's non-refundable, you don't get it back.
And, and, as long as, and as long as you make that clear in the policy, I'm okay with it.
Okay.
It's just, if that's what we're deciding, let's make sure the policy is clear.
Let's put in there, non-refundable for unilateral applicant withdrawal.
Okay.
Or, would it be better to say, unused balance refundable upon completion of the HCA, or upon execution of the HCA? That way, the only way out, the only way to get the refund is to cross the finish line. Anything else makes it non-refundable, rather than stating, it's only non-refundable in this, if we say it's only non-refundable in this case, then it's refundable in everything else. I'd rather say.
Yeah, you want to, because I had already, I had already said.
The first one you just said.
I had already, I had already said the first one, what you just said.
I know, yes.
You said, if expenses are less than 75, if town expenses are less than $7,500, balance will be returned within, to the applicant, within 60 days of completion of.
Successful completion of.
Yep, that's, then that's good. I forgot you said that, I was listening to it, you said it recently.
So, then they, once they get, so you see the list of what they need to provide in their initial meeting?
Yep.
And we've just hammered out the price and how they get it back, if they get it back, when they get it back, if they get it back. They have to have their outreach meeting, which we then have to sign off on, which means they have to notify us, and one of us has to attend, to make sure they actually did it.
Would it make sense to actually specify that, that the community outreach meeting should be part of a public hearing of?
Absolutely not, because it's all governed by the CCC. We don't have any control over that, they have the laws.
Got it, never mind.
They stipulate how it has to be done.
Can we ask politely that they schedule it right before one of our selectmen meetings?
We can ask politely, but they can say no.
Okay.
And, and you know, another issue with that is that it needs to be noticed, they have to send things out to the abutists, has to be published in the paper, it's, they go through so many hoops from the CCC, I don't think adding an extra step would be.
Advisable, got it.
I don't think so.
I can, I can be smart, wise about it, though.
And I put that all projects are subject to site plan review by the planning board?
Mm-hmm.
Now, that will, is subject to change based on the bylaws, right?
Right.
So, so that needs to be a little caveat there.
Based on the bylaws at the time?
Yeah.
The laws in effect?
Yeah, subject to bylaws in effect at the time.
Any other changes to pick on this, because otherwise, I'd pick them.
One, one other concern.
Okay.
Is breakage. What happens, it's like, the applicant goes away, and then comes back and says, you still have some of my money, I want to reactivate the process. Do we need to say, at a certain point, your fee is non-refundable, and if you want to come back?
Yes, if they unilaterally withdraw, they lose the money.
Well.
That's a unilaterally withdraw.
Well, but how do we, but what if they just stop responding, and they, and they don't say they withdrew, they just.
Then I send them an email that says, we haven't heard from you. If we don't hear from you in a certain amount of time, then you are going to be considered unilaterally withdrawn from this process.
Okay, and that's, if, if that will hold water legally, I'm good with it.
Yeah, it will hold water.
I figured, since you said we can do it, it would hold water, but it's like, I just wanted to, I just wanted to make sure that we didn't do this. I've, I've worked with enough contracts in my career that I've learned to think of these angles.
It's not a bad thing, it's actually.
And this, I can be going.
Yeah, these are very, very, great suggestions.
I wasn't thinking that yet, but I'm starting to get concerned. Oh, they're getting close.
On that note, that was my last concern, so I, I would, if there's no objection, I'll move that we adopt this host community agreement process as amended in our discussion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So we have the ARPA funds back on, with.
We do, because I was not putting that on there for Ryan.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Ryan just showed up.
Ah!
He had nothing to do with it.
Okay.
So we have, and I sent this to you in an email, explaining that we have $1.3 million in ARPA funds. We have roughly spent a little over $600,000.
Okay.
Now, I knew that Ryan was coming to get money for Culverts, and for the Green Street project.
Yep.
I did not know he was coming to you to get more money for Central Street.
I thought we already had earmarked someone.
Yeah, I thought that was already money that was earmarked.
Well, that was like, a week time ago, so I don't know why you're voting on it now, if you had already earmarked it for that.
Yeah.
But anyways, we were also given an additional $250,000 for repairing and upkeeping of town buildings, and, and downtown, like, revitalization, but they intended it for restoring buildings.
Okay.
I want $100,000 to fix the room upstairs.
Oh!
Can I have it?
Well, does it have to go directly, I mean, it can go to whatever in the town hall, right?
No, 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 no.
Oh, you.
It can go, you can give it a whole 250, I'll be happy with that. I will fix this entire building, and get it beautiful and looking like it should, until I run out of money. But let's be reasonable about it. We need to fix the upstairs, we're, we're in the process, we finally have the engineered plans for the lift.
Yay!
However.
You already have your money for the lift, too.
I have some of the money for the lift, but because the prices have gone up, we may have to go out to bid again, because it's been so long, and even though I did this last year, we've exceeded the threshold now. I'm waiting for them to give me, I just sent them the prevailing wage, information last week, and I'm waiting to hear back on the ticket and price, and see what the materials are going to cost.
Okay.
But if I have the ARPA money, I have the money to complete that project, and I have the money to get the room upstairs repaired. Now, I just asked Senator Goby for money to insulate this building, because I can get all of the money I want, and then some, and incentives to put in special lighting, but no one will give us any funding to fix the envelope for the building. And if they're all hot and bothered about green energy, and climate control, and energy preservation, we need money to stop the bleeding and hemorrhaging of heat out of this building. There is not a single bit of insulation. And if you buy me the batting upward.
The insulation doesn't even matter, because some of the windows are stuck open.
Right, and those are the things that I want to have addressed, those are the things that I want to get fixed. So that's why I'm asking for the downtown revitalization money before it's all gone. So we have roughly, well, you're the math people, we have 1.3 million, plus 250,000, minus 630, and whatever y'all voted for Ryan, plus another 109 for Ryan, for Culverts. I was going to put the Culverts in as free cash, but because we're going out to bid, we have to guarantee the money's there before we can sign a contract.
Right, right, which was the reason to.
To use the ARPA money, yeah, but that's what the ARPA money's for anyway.
Yeah.
You know, but that 250 is for fixing things in downtown.
Yeah.
So.
So what would you do with the other 150? For downtown revitalization?
Oh, if you gave me the whole 250?
No, I'm saying, at least the point of asking for the 100, because what are you going to do with the other 150? Or what's the intent?
Well, there's a lot of time with us spending there.
Spending it, so.
Oh, okay. So you're just saying, you at least want 100 right now?
I want 100 right now, so that I can fix the upstairs, and if, if we can get it done in a good timeframe.
We could have town.
We could have town meetings up there, and, and I know that the 350th wants to do a dance up there. So, if we can get all of our little ducks in a row.
I'd like to see performances of some sort.
Yeah.
Maybe.
That's what it was for.
So, so to get it back to what it's intended, and I reached out to a blacksmith, and I have had hand wrought iron sign holders made to match the downstairs, from the time period of this building.
Oh, cool.
And the, I was going to buy them and donate them.
Oh.
And the blacksmith found out what it was for, and he is donating them.
Oh, really?
Yes. And he's, he made the hangers, I'm going to make all the signs for him, so everybody will, and the Morris's window is going to say information and tickets, just so you know.
That's fine. That's outstanding.
So that is why the ARPA money was on the agenda.
Okay.
And my humble request to you.
That's your humble request?
Yes.
Through me, Mr. Vanish?
Excuse me?
I said, through me, Mr. Vanish.
Yeah, well, that's why I was going to.
Yep.
My question was, with all this available money, is anyone talking about either a fire block system or a fire suppression system in this building?
That would be an excellent use of that money.
That would.
Do you, Madam Chair?
You need the rest.
We need an additional, how much? You got a rough idea what it would cost for fire suppression in here? Chief?
Uh, suppression, I would even, I would even venture, yes. The alarm system wouldn't be that big a deal, because the building's open enough and everything. This side of the building's got to be an addressable system, which means, is, you have the microphone down here, you can notify everybody to talk through it, but that.
Price check on Blue Juice Bob, like that?
I'm sorry?
Like, like in the grocery store, price check on Blue Juice Bob?
So you can, you can tell everyone, you can make announcements, but that has, the system for this building has to be designed by an engineer.
Right.
That was a misconception a couple boards ago, that, you know, Scott Mansfield can knock something out of the mail because of, because of this type of building.
Well, I would be happy to take the rest of that downtown money and put fire safety in this building, if it isn't off.
So, so let's, so.
Because that's going to impact even doing anything upstairs, I would think, if you don't.
Just for information, Chris Corwin, who works in that profession, gave us with a half a cost, a cost of $80,000 for just paying the alarm system.
Yeah, that sounds about right.
Just for the alarm, not even the suppression.
Okay.
Suppression's going to be stupid.
So, so, but let's, let's do this, the engineering of it is, let's at least get quotes on that.
Yeah, we can do that. They're exempt from procurement, we don't have to get quotes.
Oh, no.
No, not for engineering purposes.
Okay.
And one more comment in regards to the chief's bringing up a suppression system. What they did in Southwood, near Town Hall, was to just put suppression systems in the corridors, the exit corridors, so, because all their concern was they were able to keep those corridors from your fires and they could exit the building, instead of doing the entire building. So, just a comment.
Okay, thank you. Um, I don't know if I want to go that far yet, but fundamentally, I think the alarm system is well overdue.
Yes, absolutely.
I mean, do we even have a smoke alarm in this room?
No, we don't. We don't, because you're actually, it's hypothetically worse to have ones that are not properly engineered than to have none, at some levels, so.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because then people think that they're safe and they're not actually. It's better to have good old fashioned fear, apparently, so. Um, now, is the 100,000 that you want, are you just like, do we have estimates, or are you just assuming that's what, what it's going to take?
It'll take more than that. I mean, it could, I, I wouldn't be surprised.
For the upstairs? I, I would be surprised if, if that actually would finish the upstairs, because I'm thinking the walls.
So it would get you the minimum viable product.
Yeah, I'm thinking the walls getting cleaned and scraped, and I would like to wallpaper it instead of painting it, because we see how much paint sticks up there over and over and over again.
I mean, you start touching those windows, and that's another hundred grand right there.
Yeah.
You know, and, and possibly get the, the woodwork redone, but I, I'm thinking that I'm lowballing it with 100 on this.
We are. So, but I don't have a problem with releasing it 100 at a time, and then if, if there's something that comes up that's more than that.
You want to give me 100 for the upstairs and 80 for the fire?
Yeah.
And we'll see where that gets us.
We'll see if that gets us there.
And just, can I ask you to reserve the remainder of the 250?
Do that, then.
Just like this?
Just a cell coordinator.
Yeah, and can I ask you to reserve the remainder of that 250 in case there's not enough to do what we want to do?
I mean, we don't have any other town controlled downtown buildings, correct?
Library and the other building.
Library, you could use it, you could use it and do the whole school roof if you wanted to. But I just asked Ann for that money, too.
Okay.
I asked Senator Goby for the money for the school roof.
Do we know?
For insulating this building.
Do we know if the school, or Marty was at that, did we know if the school was going to contribute to that roof, or did they?
What was that here?
Okay.
When I spoke with Kathleen, which was when I first started working here, she said that she was going to, they, we, they were eventually going to ask the town to help with the school roof.
Yeah.
And what I had said to her in return was, then I shall start faving money away in a stabilization account for the roof to provide half of that funding, was what I had said to her.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Um, and as a matter of fact, one of the things we didn't do is we put it, well, she's asked for 300,000, is half. But I'm trying to get the whole caboodle from Senator Goby, and even if they give a sum toward it, better than nothing.
No, those are.
And the insulation, and I asked them for 3 million dollars for an elevator outside the building.
Nice.
Yeah, you know, if they say no, we're no worse off than we are now, and if they say yes, woo-hoo, woo-hoo. If we have an external, if we have an external elevator, it doesn't impact the interior of the building.
Right, right.
So I don't know where we would put it, because of where the septic issue, and I don't know where the septic runs, but.
No, dancer.
It's just a pretty ear wig for an earmark.
Ear wig for an earmark, got it. Well done on the submission for, for the asking for the earmarks.
Thank you.
So, um, so can I get a motion to allow 100,000 for the second floor rehab and 80,000, up to 80,000 for a fire alarm, appropriately engineered fire alarm system for the building?
You have that motion, though I do have a question before.
Okay, second, so, second for discussion.
Yeah. Kelly, what, for the 100,000 for upstairs, what do you expect to be able to get done with that money? Again, can you just?
So what I'm hoping to get done with that money is to completely clean, scrape the walls, get all the walls refinished and the woodwork done, just in the main hall. That's what I expect to get done with it.
Would that bring?
So you know how my office was redone?
Yeah, get all the cars.
That on a bigger scale.
Okay, so, so that would, would, would that make the room usable for public gatherings, like a town?
Yes, it would.
Yeah. It would clean it up, but it's basically clean it up enough so you could use it, although.
You're not embarrassed when people look?
Yeah. And honestly, the reason why the paint didn't seal is a couple of different reasons. One is they didn't prime properly, because it was prisoners that, that did it, and two, because we didn't heat the upstairs for a number of years.
Yes.
And since we fit, fixed the furnace.
And it looks like they didn't use the appropriate paint, even though it wasn't primed, it shrunk, and that's what's caused the curling.
Yeah.
All right, and answered my question, thank you.
Yeah.
We still can't use it till the chairlift is in, I mean, the platform lift is in, I don't know why we're be lifting platforms, but that's what they call it now, because people envision a, you sit in it and the chair goes up like you have in your house. But it's actually a platform that you can, it has to be big enough to wheel a stretcher on.
Yeah.
Oh, really, a stretcher? I was going to be a wheelchair.
And it's just a wheelchair.
They were going to do it on the interior wall, but once the engineer came out, he said, you can't do it there, there's not enough structural integrity to hold it.
Mm-hmm.
So you have to do it on the outside wall, which made it go from one platform lift to two. So they're going to come up the first, roll over to the second, and up the second.
You're going to have to transfer, you're going to have, on the landing, you're going to have to get off one lift and get on the other?
Yes, sir. Because it has to be on an interior wall, it can't be on that rail, which I'm actually glad, because that railing's beautiful, it would have been horrible to ruin it.
Yeah. Makes sense, okay.
All right, I'm good.
All right, so, so we had the discussion.
No, no.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would like to thank Mr. Vanish for bringing that to our attention, because I completely forgot, and now it's going to get done.
Cool. All right, um, let's get through some, some of the other items, so let's do the fireman's muster next. And actually, actually, let's do the, yeah, let's do the fireman's muster next, then we'll go to the planning board associate member and get some of the.
Do I get this other stuff?
Let's get all the administrative through before we start the budget discussion. Yes, sir.
So with someone, the 350th committee had come to us, and they really wanted us to put on a muster as part of their whole year-long activity schedule, and we worked with them and picked the date of 5 August. The thought was, are we doing some other things that day, so by putting that on, it becomes not just a one item day, and I understand there's a historical walk, there's something historical about this building, it's going to happen, the Civil War encampment is going on that day, so it'll be.
Have you talked to Lois, like, in the last day or two?
Yeah.
Okay.
I did, at this point, it's too, the whole thought was having, everything, having multiple things on one day, maybe get what increase to draw, people could drift from one to the other. And the muster is one, but, you know, once you've seen, you know, 20 minutes over a half hour of it, you, you pretty much have full tank.
It's good for kids and folks that are still sort of kids.
I mean, the Civil War encampment, that's going to start first thing in the morning. You know, like Donald Fagin said, when the muster starts at 12, they'll be breaking for lunch. I don't know how interesting it is to watch Civil War reenactors eat, but, so as part of that.
Well, I just want to know if the Civil War reenactors are going to be firing stuff again, because if that's the case, then I need to take both cars, load up all the dogs and just.
Oh, yeah. Well, actually, this will affect your cars and your dogs, too.
I know.
But the fireman's muster would also affect the dogs.
So the thought of a muster, years gone by, we did it on Common Street, but with the other activities going on in the common, that would be a little intrusive, so the thought is, just like we did 25 years ago for the 325th, doing it right here, so we're asking that we be allowed to close Central Street from Sherman to Common. That gives us time to do everything, and there's, they're getting, they have arrangements for a food truck that's going to be set up on the mall, or adjacent to the mall, so that would be well beyond basically the splash zone for the muster, so there won't be any risk there. Looking for 11 P, wait, 11:00 PM, 11:00 AM to, probably 4:00 PM. Once it's closed, it's, I know we should do it a little bit more definitely, but I think we'll be done in a little bit by 4:00, possibly 5:00, I don't know just how fancy we need to get on it. We do need to notify the three entities that it will affect, I think we're doing that with one of them right now. Chris and Lisa, I can just catch up with them and just check with somebody that's church probably, clients, and just make sure they don't have anything scheduled that day or nothing that they can't realign to the front entrance or whatever.
Yeah.
But in, in all cases, we'll, you know, we'll work with everybody on that.
And what does the muster really consist of?
Uh, we were printing on three races, um, and then they just, second nature to me, people like, well, what is a muster? Yeah, I've actually had to send some of my people to YouTube, like, well, look this up, if you want to run a muster, you should have some idea. But no, it's, it's, it goes back well, and there was a muster league in Southern Wester County that was, they ran musters three times a week throughout Southern Wester County back in the 70s.
My mom used to compete.
Okay, and we've got trophies squirreled away in every corner that we can next door, but it's just, some of it was for skill refinement, you know, you're, you're running, you're setting up hoses, you're hooking up a nozzle, you're hooking up water supply, and you're shooting water downrange out of target. But you mix it up a little bit, and we're also planning what they call a bed race, where you start out on a cot with a sheet over you.
Got it.
Whistle blows, you get up, boots, coat, one snap helmet, and then you do everything.
All right. Yeah, I have the mental picture of that. Yeah, it's kind of like, it's kind of like Santers for firemen. Santers for firemen.
Okay.
Which is like, uh, basically like a, a military-related mutter.
Yeah, yeah, there's a basis in it for proficiency, but ultimately, it's just, yeah.
Yeah.
And what else is taking place that day?
Pardon?
Civil War encampment.
That's part of the, that's part of the 350th thing?
Well, yeah, cultural council.
Okay.
And correct me if I'm, Mr. Fagin said something, he was, he was setting up a historical walk for the center, because he was thrilled, he was thrilled that I was ending it at Sherman Street.
Right.
Because his point was to do this, and he.
Yeah, he, there's also a walk where he's walking people around the historic areas of foot field or something.
Right.
Oh, Lois was so excited.
And, was there something else?
No, I think it was just.
I think, was there something with this building, or, I think it was as part of the walk, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, so can I get a motion?
To allow them to.
To allow them to.
Close.
Close Central Street from 11:00 AM to 12:00 PM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Very much, thank you. I'm really hoping you have that one event where the truck comes running up and everybody jumps off the back.
No.
Okay, civilians could be.
I've seen that, yeah, that's just, that's just fraught with.
Can we do like morning training and have civilians could be?
That's just fraught with working this common all day long, I don't really see that as a.
Not answering.
No, so.
All right. That's not the August, I'm having a hard time realizing we're already in April, so.
All right.
Thank you, folks.
Okay, planning board associate member, we've got, um.
This was voted on by the planning board.
Agreed.
Last night, I believe.
So can I get a motion to appoint Lisa Mantandi as an associate member of the planning board through June 30th, 2025?
You have that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 June 30th, 2025, that's the right. Well, that's what, that's what I talked to Sarah, she said that's what they voted, was that the. 2025? Yep, two years. Okay, all right, I just want to make sure. We have some crazy appointments here.
Yeah. All right, so that's that.
Michael, I would like you to please sign three original copies of the election ballot for posting. He gave me four, because he said he only does an extra cell.
Okay, all right, so we don't need to do, we don't need to vote this, we just sign them, correct?
Correct.
All right.
Because you can't stop it. I don't think you can, actually, maybe you can, I don't know.
What's our signature for, just acknowledging that we've seen it or received it?
Well, we're basically posting the ballot, fundamentally, it's just that, that's who we're electing this year.
Okay.
So warn everybody the election's coming, the election's coming.
Yes.
Sorry.
Got it.
And no one's ever.
One of my two, if they see, the election is coming.
The election is coming, the election is coming.
I'm texting them.
All right, so, medical insurance rates, is that just for discussion?
Well, you can discuss it, and if you don't like it, we can get new insurance company, because this is what they are, and they need you to know that you have accepted the rates.
Ah.
They ain't going to change them. Now, there is one change on this, we have the two person, and it shifts, it shifts the, um, cost.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it waxes the families, that's a big increase.
Well, it is.
I mean, it's, I understand.
But at the same time, it means that all of the other people who don't have children are no longer subsidizing the people with children. So I guess it's, it's entirely up to you how you want to handle this, we could ask them to shift the burden a little more evenly, but then again, you have the people subsidizing the people with families.
Mm-hmm. I'm not, I'm not looking to shift costs, I mean, if that's, if it costs, if that's what it costs for insurance, I think it's most appropriate to pass that through, I'm just, was more just observing. That's, that's a big increase.
It is a very big increase.
And, and that's one point.
It's equal at 401%, and then if you're in a family, it's even, it's going to be even higher.
Is, is that the total cost, and part of that is passed through to the employees?
Yes, this is the total cost for the town, so 60% of that we pay and 40% they.
Right, so whatever the increase is, the, the employees will see 40% of that increase.
Yes.
Change on their paycheck, okay.
Yes.
That's.
Hold on one second, let me see if I can.
40% of a 50 timerock is still pretty heavy.
Yeah, that's me. So can I get a motion to authorize me to sign further MIA health rates?
Kelly, this is our best option, I'm guessing?
Well, Blue Cross and Blue Shield is, unless we become self-insured, this is the only, this is our only option, unless we want to go with a, a different healthcare provider.
A different insurance carrier?[1637.71] A different insurance carrier?
And a different carrier, because MEA doesn't carry anybody but Blue Cross.
And I hate to say it, I mean, this, you also have to remember, this is like Cadillac insurance. Like, I don't know about in your workplace, but I have a high deductible plan.
Me too.
So, and honestly, at the $250 deductible plan for an individual, I mean, the rate that they're paying is what I pay for my high deductible plan at the company. So I know this feels expensive when you look at it, but when you consider that they're not putting seven grand out of pocket before stuff actually hits. And at, and at the $250 deductible rate, they're paying what a lot of high deductible plans are, I get that it's expensive.
It is, but if you look at the real, the, the private sector.
Yeah.
They're getting a very good deal.
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying, is that my, my, my high deductible costs the same.
How many employees are covered? I actually have that information, and I don't.
Just about, under 50 or over 50?
Under 50, I believe. Let's see if I can find it. So wait a search. So I have it. Yay, me.
So, I'm quick to stay with MEA and going self-insured, which I have zero interest in.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think we're the right size to try and self-insure, it doesn't strike me as.
It's a really bad idea.
Yes, we're, we're one major medical event from big problems.
Yes.
Yes, no, we need the insurance.
And, and one of the reasons it's gone up is because we have had a couple of claims that are huge in the last, and they have, they do a three-year lookback. And we have two giant claims that are dropping off for next year. So hopefully, God willing, no one will get egregiously ill, and that will help stabilize the rates.
Yeah, for next year.
But we have a total of, dun, dun, duh. No, it's 24 plus 31, that's how many employees take the insurance right now.
24 plus 31 is 55.
We have 55 people on the insurance at this time. And I don't, does that include?
No, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Because that means we're experience rated, which means if they were talking to you about claims, we had over 50.
Yeah. So.
All right, I, I move that we.
Make them insurance guys.
Accept the rates that we have in front of us. Is that a submission?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's the insurance.
That could be one of those things that you regionalize with other towns, no?
No, you have to be part of. So, in order to do that, you have to be part of a co-op.
Right.
An insurance co-op.
Right.
And there are insurance co-ops, but nobody's letting anybody in, because they don't want any more claims.
Yeah.
So we would be alone in a sea of.
We'll just look for the young ones.
I mean, we've gone out to get quotes on the liability insurance, but the medical insurance, I don't. I don't see us.
Okay, meeting participation policy.
Yes, unfortunately, due to my unfortunate and repeated illnesses over the last several months, I'm not ready with that.
Okay, so we're going, do we want it on the next meeting? Will you be ready by the next meeting, or is it one after that?
I'm working on the warrant now, so, and there's people starting to send in articles for the warrant, so I'm kind of trying to keep up with that, because the warrant closes on the 24th of this month, and I've given myself, like, extending it out that late, because of the timing, I've given myself four days to finish it and get it to Town Council.
Okay, so what?
So I need to kind of really focus on that, I've got procurement for a tree bid that needs to be done from scratch.
So move that to May?
Yeah, please.
Okay, resignation, we do accept with our regrets Cassandra Estes from the Cultural Council? Because she's no longer in Brookfield.
It's a good reason.
I move that we accept a resignation.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Got a contract for tax title?
Now, so I put a new one in your packet tonight, because we don't actually pay any money for this. There's a buyer's premium.
Okay.
They would like to set it, the original one was 6.5%, but because our parcels are.
A low value.
So low in value, because they're, they're basically going to be attractive to a butters. If nobody shows up, they can get them for whatever, you know? Because I'm, I'm recommending that we do not put a minimum bid on any of the parcels.
We want to move them?
Because we want to move them, the goal is to get them off the tax rolls, not to recoup our money, because we will never recoup the money we've already lost on them.
So is it an onsite auction?
It is going to be, so we, we met with them today, that properties are all tagged already with signs. They're already getting phone calls, they sent me an email tonight, right before the meeting, said, oh my God, we're already getting interest. I suggested that we hold it at Lewis Field.
Oh.
Because it gives that, they have a mobile unit that they bring, that they can do the auction, there's a pavilion there.
Yeah, you can go into the.
And it'll accommodate a lot more people.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
So I suggested that, and if the weather, because it's New England, if it's snowing on May 31st, because it can, we can hold it in here instead.
Okay. Sounds good, and so are we doing all the properties, even the ones that originally they weren't interested in because of being?
No, we're one with a completely different company, because the other company was non-responsive, they didn't want to do it because of the low value.
Okay, but this, but they're, these guys are going to do all of the properties?
They're going to do what we currently hold clear title to.
Okay.
And we're anticipating another 15 or so out of tax title soon, so we'll be able to repeat the process. Hopefully, it'll be successful.
Great.
And we'll be able to repeat the process soon. So they put my name on there, Amy asked them to, because she knew that I signed for the board, she didn't realize that I was going to run it by you first, because I didn't want to sign something without discussing it with you.
Okay.
Prior to.
So do we want a motion to authorize, well, you already authorized the signed contract?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Once, once you agree that it's a contract you would like to enter into.
So can I get a motion to enter into the contract with Sullivan and Sullivan for sale of all properties owned free and clear by the town of Brookfield that are not earmarked for any type of public use?
So, second.
That was great.
Favor?
Aye. I'll write it down for you, not earmarked for public use.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I just, I didn't want anyone to think we're selling the town.
So I mean, maybe.
No, we're not selling the town, it's 50 tax title properties.
The, that piece of land that was across from the school, was that not your, or maybe it's just because it never went forward. There was talks at one point of putting a senior thing there.
You need to tell me what piece of land you're talking about.
Across from the school.
The piece of land across from the school is not a description.
It was on Lincoln Street Extension, and the, the community group came back and said that they don't feel that it's time for us to build.
And it was not a viable site either, I believe they said that was not a viable site.
Yeah.
And not a good location.
I mean, it's been a while, then I.
Yeah, but they basically came back.
You were actually a selectman when that happened, so.
But at least.
I was?
You were not.
No, 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 I wasn't.
Okay.
Marty has a question.
Yep.
This is the first I've heard about the tax title auction, it has more, who does the advertising? So that we've got a good telephone for the auction.
Sullivan and Sullivan, and they're already getting feedback.
And does the town website display what properties are for auction?
Not yet, not yet, we decided.
She decided to.
So, so they have a website that they are going to completely advertise everything on, they're putting it in paper, they're the ones who are going to be advertising on their own website, we're going to put a link directly to their website. I put a banner up today on the website that said, "Town Tax Title Auction Coming Soon, Keep Posted." I sent it out on telephones today, on the town alert, so if anybody signed up for that, I made sure that it went out under the e-alert, because there's a spot on the website that you can click that, so anybody who's signed up for it will get it. I would, I had asked the assessor to please prepare maps, where the parcels are actually highlighted on the map, so people can come in here and take a look at the maps in the room and say, okay, so this map has a parcel that's going up for auction. They can make arrangements to visit the land by contacting us, and we'll send somebody out with them, so they can go and view it. And like I said, there's going to be advertisements, there's, there, the website, all of the abutters within 250 feet of each parcel are going to get a notification. And, and we have the big, you know the big sign that we have that says Town Meeting, and you just changed the number?
Yes.
That's going to have signs on it, it's going out on the, on the mall. So hopefully, we'll have this very well advertised. And, and every single parcel has a sign on it now saying Sullivan and Sullivan, contact them, so that, they've all, they were all marked today. So hopefully, we'll get, I was thrilled that they could do it so soon.
And the more money that comes in, the more money they make?
Yes, but, but, under the procurement laws, we, we actually don't expect them to net very much, which is why they changed the percentage from 6.5 to 8. I would be surprised if they made $10,000 on this auction. You would have to make $30,000, and they would have to be at 10% to make that much money.
But they're, but they're, I hate to put it this way, they're doing that, I suspect, in part, in the hopes of keeping business from us and bringing our stuff together.
Absolutely, we have some nice parcels that are going to be coming up.
Yeah.
For sale, so, and they will, they will.
What was the date of the auction?
May 31st, which is a Wednesday.
Which is the day before annual town meeting.
It is the day before the annual town meeting.
Well, then at least at town meeting, we won't have to answer the question, what are we doing about tax title?
But anyways, we will, we'll just have a good answer.
Hey, double bonus.
Did you have a turn?
No. And, we're going to put in a stipulation that if you owe any taxes in this town, you are precluded from vote, from participating. So we're going to have Brenda there to collect any outstanding taxes. Somebody wants to come and play, they go have to pay their taxes.
So like, if I didn't pay my taxes?
If you didn't pay your excise tax, you're going home, or you're going to pay your excise tax while you're there.
Nice.
And there's also, so it's against the law if your property was taken in tax title for you to participate in a tax title auction in your town.
Okay.
It was my understanding, and I have to double check, that you could not vote, you couldn't, you couldn't buy your own parcel. But when I was speaking with Betty from Sullivan and Sullivan, she said that it actually extends to the entire auction. And, and because of a prior auction where the auctioneer allowed the previous owner to bid, and they won their property back, which we had to void the whole auction, I was livid, because I wasn't there, and I would have stopped it, they knew that this was the prior owner. So I asked them, what do you have to vet these people?
Yeah.
And they have it all in the computer, and they'll give us a report at the end of the auction, and they will not let anyone register who was in the prior, was, had prior ownership. So.
So we have to.
These guys really, really know what they're doing, I was very impressed when I spoke with them, they, they answered all of my little picky legal questions without any hesitation.
Did they put the right town name in the contract proposal?
Yes, you know, it said Peru, I know, and I said to, I said to Amy, I can't believe I sent it to this lesson before I read it. Because you sent it to me, and I trusted you, evil woman. And she's like, what? I said, it says Peru, and they're going to advertise in Greenfield, this is not good enough. Said, so, we may, I sent it back to you, I highlighted the mistakes, please have them correct it for the contract for tomorrow night, and they were mortified. So today, when I met with them, and I asked them these questions, I said, you're not going to check it against the Peru taxes, oh, right? And they were like, oh my God, we're so sorry, we're so sorry. They were trying to get it, so we actually had been reaching out to Sullivan and Sullivan, we got their name from another town who had a successful auction with them, they've actually had several in the area. And they wanted to get it on for the agenda today, so they did the contract in a hurry and didn't check.
Is that the same Sullivan and Sullivan, like in Brookfield or Holland or something like that?
They did the auction in Holland, they did an auction in Brookfield, but they are not the realtors. There was a Sullivan and Sullivan, realtors, yeah, we had pizza place in Amity Athens on Route 20.
These aren't the same.
Right, they're not the same. They did do the auction in Brookfield, though.
Any other questions or comments regarding it?
No.
No.
Awesome. Move on to the item for approving prior minutes, can I get a motion to approve?
Are these either the ones that you sent?
Yeah, the previously sent.
328. Yeah, because there were corrections to the 328, and I didn't have a chance to review it and send it to, so that one needs to be corrected before you can vote on it, so. You do the regular, but not the executive session.
I have a question, and it might be just too cumbersome to do, but like, you had questions about, to get clarity.
Yeah.
Is there any, is it difficult for you to get a copy of the video and look at the video?
Oh, no, I definitely could, but obviously, I wanted to get the minutes, well, no, it was executive session anyway. It was executive session, so there is no recording. Yes, it's not recorded. So there was just a couple of things in the executive session that needed to be edited, and then, so just don't, don't approve the executive session portion of those minutes, that's all.
Which, which day are we not approving executive session?
328, executive session.
Yeah. So can I get a motion to approve the open session minutes from 328 and the open session minutes from 331?
I didn't write two cents, but you did look at the 331 executive session, too.
Let's just do both the executive ones.
Okay.
At the next meeting.
So moved? Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, and then our police monthly report, what did we get for police monthly report? All right, so Department, during the month of February, the 249 calls for service for in custody arrests, three people who were summoned to court on charges, and eight motor vehicle accidents. The body camera server has been delivered at the beginning of January, it was installed February 22nd, and they are all set to go live on April 17th. This has been a long process to get the cameras up and running due to shortages in equipment. The cameras were purchased by Grant over two years ago. Attached is a list of offenses that were investigated during the month of February.
So they now need new cameras, because they're old?
Well.
Hope the cameras.
Hopefully, hopefully, they're good enough, right? The server's new, that's a more important part of it, so. They're, they're, if they were a fountain pen, they'd be old stock, but Newman Box, so Newman Box, it's probably good for. So we had 12 total offenses that were investigated, including some fairly significant ones, so. I don't know if y'all want to, I don't know if y'all had a chance to review the report.
More curiosity.
So can I get a motion to accept the department report?
So moved? Second.
All in favor?
All right, aye.
Okay, now we are on to the budget discussion, which is terrifying, given that it's already quarter to eight.
So. I missed y'all, I haven't seen for like a week, so.
I know.
We haven't seen, yeah. A lot of chatting. All right, so we have our budget.
Kelly?
Yes?
I'm picking up the document you sent from March 17th, is that current enough? I don't recall, we see anything more recent, so I just want to make sure there's, that we're, that's.
I sent you the new school numbers, I don't know what date that was, but the, the high school was not included in our original.
I think I grafted those numbers in, although actually.
And then we had one change, when Karen asked, what town is it that we do the pilot with, North Brookfield?
Oh, East Brookfield.
She asked East Brookfield how much for FY '24, our payment in lieu of taxes would be, and they gave us what we owed them for FY '23, which we didn't know until she handed them for the bill, because they didn't actually send it to us, oversight, whatever, and she said, this is exactly what you want for next year, and they said, oh, well, we don't know what we're going to need for next year. So we haven't had.
The payment in lieu of taxes is for what, our wells?
I don't know.
I don't even know, I don't know.
No idea, this is something that's been longstanding for, it's got to be for property.
The wells would make sense.
But you ended up saying 750.
Yeah, she said to estimate 750, so that changed from the 600 and whatever to 750 for the request, which is in your very top section under the selectmen, under the general government.
Yep, okay, because you had 630, and we're saying 750.
Which is what they asked us for, and then they changed it, so we're changing it to 750. And that's the only change that I'm aware of, other than getting the school, getting the high school numbers in. And I sent the elementary school numbers out, and I had a typo in it, so I think I sent you those, though.
I think you did, I just.
But those are the only changes.
Have to get them out of one into the other.
So those are the only changes that there were. So you have your 3% for your salaries, and then you just need to decide how you want to deal with other people's, what their budgets are. I've had a lot of requests from departments, and I back this 100%, they would like to get an online permitting program. There's a program called Permitize, which is an amazing program.
For building permits?
Contractors, electrical inspection, electrical permits, building permits, absolutely amazing program. People can do it online, they pay online, they get to see the, inspectors can see the whole application, approve it, disapprove it, correspond with the, with the contractors, the homeowners, and it can do, it can do all permits that I'm aware of, in the building, it can do, it can do board of health permits, and I would like to see if I can get that for next year, everybody's super excited about it. I don't know if we have the money to fund it, we could do it with free cash this year, and then calculate it in for next year, because I don't know how quickly we could implement it. But that's something that would need to be added to the technology budget, and it's based on the number of permits issued. So they estimate your payment based on the number of permits that you do. Now, we roughly run, hold on, I got this information today. Where are you, Nicholas? 2023, we're currently at 39 permits, they did 14 this week. We averaged, let's see, 2022, we did 166, and this is just in the building department. 2021, there was 153, 2020, there was 126, and if we just, if we do like the entire building department now, we might be able to add in board of health for their licenses.
That would be great, because that would cut the administrative burden for doing them by a lot.
Yes, yes. Yes. It absolutely would. I don't have a price. I'm estimating.
Okay.
That it's, it won't be more than five thousand dollars a year, but I don't know if you want to add that to the budget or not.
How much, how much you said five thousand a year?
Roughly, I think. I'm estimating. I don't have a, I don't have a solid number.
And you're proposing putting it in the technology budget or putting it?
Yes, because it is tech, because it is technology. I was proposing to put it in the technology budget. The technology budget is huge, or it appears huge, because I've taken everything that was hidden in all these other places and compiled them. So we have a true picture of what the technology costs.
Right.
Um, we're being acquired by the insurance company to upgrade our, um, security, but we won't have our cybersecurity. We won't have our, our insurance. So that is an uptick as well. I have the whole thing broken down somewhere.
So what's, so, and then where is the technology budget? What line is that?
It is, um, right underneath the selectmen, general, it's, it says total selectmen and then software licensing, I have zero.
Yep.
And computer acquisition, I have zero. And then the total tech budget comes from the second tab in your.
Spreadsheet.
Spreadsheet.
Okay.
Now, I don't know if I linked it in yours, but that's how mine is generated. So all.
It's a straight-up number.
And so we need to add, what, five thousand for the permitting?
If you are willing to do that. I told everybody that I would absolutely ask, but if it is a no, then it's a no.
Yeah. I, I'm, I'm inclined to go with the permit, online permitting system, just to give the people of the town better services.
And that's exactly what I was going to say, because.
That is so clunky.
We have, we have so many things that we do for them that they don't see, they don't feel, they don't touch.
Yep.
This is tangible. This is something that makes it easy. They don't have to come in here on a Wednesday night and wait for like five hours.
That needs to stop anyway. And if, and if getting this system will stop that, that's worth it unto itself.
Mm-hmm. Cause to try to do anything in this town is.
It's cumbersome.
Yeah.
It's cumbersome.
Yeah.
And I think this would be a really good service for the residents.
Yeah.
And contractors, and it would encourage.
It would encourage growth, and plus it would encourage documentation, right?
It would, and it would.
You don't have, you don't have the excuse of, gee, I couldn't get in in time when my contractor was available, so I just did it anyway.
Yeah. Yep. Mm-hmm. Yep. So you're okay with that? Right? Cause then I, I'll reach out to Permitize and talk to them about giving us a demonstration.
Your questions, sir?
Permitize.
How do you spell it?
No, it's U-I-E.
Permit, I agree.
Yeah, Permitize.
Yeah, as in eyes on helmet.
Yeah.
Visibility.
Yeah.
Is this, um, all web-based software or is there a hosted-out server on the town network?
Well, I haven't actually spoken to them yet. I believe that is web-based.
It looks like it's web-based.
It's, 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 it's kind of paid by the, we have to pay by the usage. Whenever it's paid by transaction, it's always software as a service.
Yeah. And it is, yeah, P-E-R-M-I-T-E-Y-S.
Do you know the towns that are using it?
And I've had it in a couple of towns, and they absolutely love it. There's some real old-time contractors who don't, because they're not computer savvy. Um, and one of the ways we, we assisted them, we actually had an inspector who couldn't use it because he was not computer savvy.
He put a terminal in the town hall?
Is we put a terminal in the town hall and we sit down and we just help them.
Yeah.
We have a little table upstairs that I have earmarked.
Has there been any discussion for, with our people, with our inspectors, if?
They're asking for it.
If they're okay with using?
Yeah, they're asking for it. They, they were super stoked about it, yeah.
Even Jeff?
Jeff was the first one to go, that would be amazing.
That's great. Years ago, years ago, I fought with him to put the PDF of the, of the building permit request up online. And now he's asking for the system. That just makes me giddy. That, I'm sorry.
Yeah, he was like, it'll, it'll do what? I said, you don't have to talk to them. They'll submit everything online. They pay online, and you don't have to even talk to them until they're paid.
Yeah.
In fall. So you don't have to worry about turnovers to the treasurer. You don't have to worry about people dropping checks off or cash off in an envelope that goes missing from here. Mail's disappearing out of this thing again.
Yeah.
Um, you don't have to worry about any of that.
Any of that.
It's all, you don't have to handle any money. It'll be a beautiful thing. You can schedule your, your inspections through it.
There's a lot of towns.
Does it integrate with VEDAR and?
No.
With our systems?
It doesn't integrate with VEDAR. VEDAR, VEDAR is, is financial software.
Okay. Well, I was just wondering if it?
Only.
If the payments could be integrated, but if not, it not, I mean, it's, we'll still get statements and it just have to be, the, the payments would then have to be entered into our tracking systems, into our, into our books.
Yes, well, they have to actually give us the money.
Yes.
So when they give us the money, yeah, it has to come with some kind of reporting.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if it's a bank-to-bank transfer. Amy's very familiar with the system because she helped set it up in another town.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, and it was, once people got used to it, they never wanted to lose it. They never wanted to lose it. They thought it was the best thing since sliced bread. And the residents were thrilled with it, because they have a record that they reached out to the inspector.
Are there any towns in our immediate area that are using it?
I don't know.
Okay. Cause that might be, it's like if, if we're say being using West Brookfield, we could say, West Brookfield's using it. And then people.
I know West Brookfield's not using it.
No, I'm, that was.
And North Brookfield's not using it either.
But, but if, whatever town's local, people might know someone and they could say, oh, yeah, I've used it, it's really good. Just, I was just wondering. I don't think it's.
So I, like I said, I think it'll make it easier for, um, Charlton has it.
Yeah. And I guess fundamentally, if we're not happy with it, we can always refuse, not renew the contract and go back to the old system.
A lot of people on Cape have it.
Sturbridge is a different one.
Eastern Rehoboth, Skidmore, um, Chickaby, Bedford, Kingham, Mashpee, Sandwich, Braintree, Falmouth, North Reading, all of Berkshire County, apparently.
Mm-hmm.
And Charlton is using it. And, which means our accountant is also familiar with it, because she's receiving payments and.
Yeah.
Or receiving documentation from it.
I mean, yes, we could, um, you know, look up other potential softwares, but it seems to be used broadly enough that if that's the one they're asking for.
Yeah.
Fine.
Speaking of software, you had asked me to look up software to get permits for parking down at the beach.
Yes.
I don't know if this can do it, but the state has its own system. It's, it's its own in-house system, so we can't get their system. You had asked me to look at the state's.
Yeah, cause, well, cause, yeah. The Connecticut state, the Connecticut state parks are just some common.
No, they don't. They use their own system. It was a Connecticut one that I checked.
Oh.
Are you talking about South Palm?
Yeah. Or, yeah. But I don't know, Permitize could do that. We might be able to hook them up for beach permits.
So I thought we could do beach permits.
We can.
We can do parking permits across the hallway. That's our parking lot. They can't stop us from doing that.
Yeah. It's our parking lot, so we can charge for parking.
Oh, actually, my mother had asked me that. So we own the parking lot across the street?
Yes.
Oh.
And we're able to do the water, but not the water.
It's like the beach is public, but parking is permitted?
Well, if you want to get like a season pass or whatever, it was just something Beth had asked me to look into, because they, they wanted to generate revenue to maintain the beach.
Yeah, no, I understand.
So, um, at the cultural council meeting, they're talking about doing the waterski show, and they brought up, um, he got approval from the state to do it, and they said they'll give him twelve parking spots. What twelve parking spots are they talking about then?
I have no idea, because they don't own the parking lot.
Yeah, I'll talk to them.
Have them find out.
Maybe the parking that's right in front of the beach? That's not ours.
What about where that kayak ramp is or whatever? Is that?
That's not ours.
Uh, maybe that's what they're talking about.
Yeah, maybe.
Twelve spots over there.
Yeah. Does the state control the parking on the pond side of Lake Road?
I have no idea, but I assume they would, because they own all of that. We don't own any.
We own the parking lot across the street from the.
Across, directly across the street from the town. And the ramp into that side of the river.
Okay.
That's also in Brookfield.
Yeah.
Like, call it a kayak ramp, but apparently people love these, their jet skis and boats, big boats and.
Okay, so you can put in bigger stuff.
Yeah.
Question?
Yes.
Regarding parking, you had a lot. Would there be different charges for just regular vehicles or the?
We can't.
Vehicles that come with trailers attached, boat trailers?
We can't really, we can't really answer that question. I was just letting her know, because it's not on the agenda.
Yeah.
But I was just letting her know that I did actually look into it while we were talking about software.
Other, other billing software. So at one point I had asked her to look into, because I, down in Connecticut, I had used a, a parking pay, you know, scan the QR code, let them know who you are, and that's how you paid your parking fee, you know?
But that's actually an in-house system, because I checked with Bigelow Hollow, actually.
Oh, did you? Yeah, thank you.
Should we figure out? I don't know.
Well, that's why I'm saying we might be able to do that through Permitize. That's something I will investigate.
Yeah.
And that's the only reason I brought it up.
Yeah. So, yeah, let's see if it can, if it could also be used for that, because I think that'd be, it'd be great if one system could do it all.
Right? That would be awesome. That would be awesome. And I know Mike pays for a dog licensing program. If he could do the licensing through Permitize, we might be able to.
That'd be great.
Just shift that funding over.
Mm-hmm.
And it, maybe it does, I, maybe it doesn't. I don't know. But I will find out.
Yep. Okay.
Kelly?
Yes?
Uh, question on the treasurer budget?
Yeah.
I'm looking at payroll services and expenses, and the payroll services, we are not funding this year.
No, we are. That's in the technology budget, because it's Harper's, um, it's part of, it's a techno, it's a program.
Okay. But, but the treasurer payroll services line is going away. And we're not, I mean, we're, we're funding, what that funded is being funded through a different line.
Yes.
So, and, and so that's fine. But the expenses is going up to what the payroll services line used to be?
So if you look across, you'll see that the year before she started, now, she was asked to give us a budget, having worked here for two months. She was not aware of how many things were mailed out of the treasurer's office. And the request to bring it back to what it was prior to her being hired is because she needs that for payroll. She, it's for postage. She had to go to AdCom to get postage money.
Okay.
So that's why she's just bringing it back up to what it was in twenty-two.
It just happens to be the same amount of money.
Yeah, I, I do see that the, it's, it's, yeah, it's like I noticed it going to the number, the account two rose up, but it's also going to the number that was in fiscal year twenty-two.
Yes, and that's, that's what she wanted to do, was to bring it back up to what it was. And she wholeheartedly apologized. I'm like, what, what is this? She goes, I had no idea what the postage expense was going to be. I've never mailed this many things in my life.
Mm-hmm.
And so she grossly underestimated the mailing. She thought that, that, that the expense was actually padded, and that's why she cut it down.
And it wasn't.
So, so now that she's got a year in, she knows what it actually cost.
So the actuarial expense for OPAD.
Mm-hmm.
Is that something we're going to need to pay every year?
Yes, it is. And it changes. So one year it's, it's a full actuarial review, and a second year it's an audit. And so one year it'll be higher and then it'll be low.
So we'll never get out of the business.
Ever, never. It's a requirement of the GASB seventy-five, I think.
Okay.
Which is Government Accounting Standards Board, so.
Yep. Okay.
That will never go away.
Kelly?
Yes?
In your, for the elementary school expenses.
Mm-hmm.
The, um, the requested number is three point five seven million. And the next column, which I assume is the select, what were you intending to be the select board recommendation, is lower than that. And so they're not.
Well, that's because I had received the correct number, and I didn't actually shift anything over, because you all had this at this point.
Mm-hmm.
So I, and you hadn't voted anything, and I only had placeholders in.
Okay. So that's an old placeholder that.
It needs to be bumped up to what the school is actually requesting, which is the number in the column.
Okay, that, thank you. That, that explains that.
All right. So, go ahead.
Uh, let's see.
What do you have for numbers in there?
Uh.
Please.
Uh, for the school? Elementary school? Column H. 570640.
Okay, that's what, well, that's what I've labeled it. It wasn't labeled anything.
What wasn't labeled anything?
The column H, which I believe is the select board recommended.
Oh, yeah, yeah, 'cause I knew what it was.
You knew it.
That's why I figured what it was.
It's my spreadsheet, so, you know, I'm surprised I have any labels on it.
Kelly, Board of Health?
Board of Health, yeah.
It's, uh, the Board of Health expenses is going up, and it's like, it's like it's going up, 'cause you, in that comments, you say need clerk for 10 to 15 hours per week.
All right, so, the Board of Health expenses is, that should have been put in the Board of Health clerk wages. I put it in the wrong spot.
Okay.
That's all that is.
That's what, that's what I thought, and I just wanted to confirm that.
Okay, so where, so what's, what do we put in where, then?
So, in the spreadsheet that I sent you.
Yep.
Because the 6,500 is so close to what the clerk wages was.
Ew, I see.
Yeah, um, they really only want 6,500.
Okay.
But what they didn't realize when they, when they, when Brianna left, was that Mike was here all day.
Yeah.
And Mike was doing work every day, all day, helping residents with Board of Health stuff when he was on the Board of Health. And so, they didn't account for his time, and then they, they, um, had Brianna's time.
Right.
And then George was doing a tremendous amount of the actual legwork, and meeting with people, and taking care of the transfer station, and doing the payroll, and there's a lot of stuff that George was also doing, and all of that falls on the clerk now, because George is gone, and Mike is no longer on the board. So, what they actually need is a clerk for anywhere from 10 to 15 hours, but no less than 10 hours a week.
Okay.
Because there's just not enough time.
So, that's 8,350 is how much should be in there for clerk wages?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, so it'd be 8,350 for clerk wages. It looks like you took out the, or they took out the health agent, um, Title V agent and community health program?
All right, so, if you look at their request, they have their salary, which they want to double, because they want to, or, not double, but they, they want more, because they want to meet every, twice a month, every month. So, they're asking for an increase in that. The clerk wages, I would put back.
Is the 4,200 what they're asking for? Are they asking for more than that?
They're asking for 4,200.
Okay.
So, anything that's in the green, that's their actual request.
Okay.
Now, the $1,000 for the Board of Health agent, if you look at the FY '22 budget, that's what we paid the Board of Health agent when we had one.
Okay.
It's part of the intermunicipal agreement with Lester, that they do this. They're, we don't have a Board of Health agent. It was taken out of the FY '23 budget, because it's part of this IMA.
Do we pay Lester anything?
We don't pay them anything for it, no. And, and they added $1,000, which is more than we had when we needed one. So, I don't understand why they, they put that there, which is why I put a zero in recommending it, because it's not something that we actually need to pay for.
Okay, so can we just send them a note saying, hey, we're planning on zeroing this budget, because it's on the IMA? If there's a reason not to zero it, please advise.
They said they just wanted its backup. They know they don't have to pay for it. They said they just wanted its backup. Um, the same, so then, the Title V agent, they want $500 for this, also part of the IMA. They want $950 for the community health program, also part of the IMA.
Is there any risk?
And this is more money than we pay people when we had them as employees.
Kelly, is there any risk of the IMA falling apart? We would actually need to take these responsibilities back on, since the IMA?
Not, not currently, no. It's being done through a grant, and they've already got the grant.
Okay, so we've got the grant, and the grant is effective through the, at least through the end of fiscal year '24.
Yes.
So, we're, so we're good for this fiscal year?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
I have no reason to.
And I guess my question is, is do y'all support having them give themselves a raise for doing more meetings and more work?
Sounds like they have to.
The, the Board of Health meeting I attended, they did indicate that they felt that the, that the workload on the board was increasing, and I think they tied it back to Mike no longer being on the board, and therefore being available to take care of things during the day.
Okay.
And that would, was one of the reasons that they would need to meet more often.
And I have a higher number than what you came up with for the clerk wages, because they were paying $18 an hour.
Okay. So, what does it need to be?
It should be, it should be at least 19. That's what Sarah's getting paid, is $19 an hour.
Well, I just, I came up with that math by just subtracting 6,500 from what the number was that was in the editable spreadsheet. So, what's the number?
At 10 hours a week, for 52 weeks, it's, it's 900, 9,880.
Okay, so let's do 12 and a half hours times $19 an hour. That's average.
12.5 times 19 times 52.1, 12,373. That can't be right.
12,350 is the number I had.
12.5. And my, sometimes my calculator on my phone doesn't zero out.
No, that's fine. 12,350 sounds correct for a 12-hour-a-week job.
Times 52.1 equals, yeah, 12,373 dollars and 75 cents, at 12 and a half hours a week.
Okay, so 12,375, if we round it?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I must have done the 14 at the 9, at the 15 hours at $19 for the recommendation.
Transfer station expenses, the date.
Do you need that?
Yes.
Can you just revisit what, tell me one bit for the figure for clerk wages?
Sure.
12,375.
12,375.
Did we get information for the transfer station on anything specific that's driving up the expense line? I mean, I know, I know everything's going up, I'm just wondering if they broke it out or gave us any guidance as to.
You know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna see if I can find her email, and I'm gonna forward it to you, because.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, 'cause FY '22.
Well, they, that overall, basically, basically, they don't know what to, so, so basically, Board of Health, in their email, along with saying how egregiously we're treating everybody, because we don't really pay folks for what's, in essence, volunteer work. They indicated that they have no idea what the transfer station costs to run, and also shouldn't be doing.
Right, that's exactly right.
Evaluations on people, and that it's up to the Board of Selectmen, I guess, to deal with any of their employees relative to, um, like, you know how we put out, hey, you know, go ahead and evaluate your employees?
But can we evaluate elected?
Well, we're not evaluating elected. We ask the elected people to evaluate their employees, and, um, basically, we, we were told that that's the town administrator's job, which I told them is absolutely not my job, because they're elected, and I have no authority over them or their people.
We don't have authority over them.
I know, and it was just a request. It wasn't an order or a demand, it was just, you know, can you do this? And we got.
Yeah, but go ahead and forward it.
I'm, I'm looking for the one that they sent me for, um.
Oh, the budget request?
The budget request, because there was, there was data in the, in that request that, I know I sent it to AdCom, because I sent them every email I got.
On the expense line, I know, I've been hearing that we should be expecting that to go up when the current contract for trash and recycling haulage goes away, or ends, and it gets renegotiated.
Yeah, and, and I, you know, I think they are kinda behind the eight ball, but they didn't ask for any help. They just complained that they didn't get any, and I don't have a crystal ball. There's no way for me to know who knows and who doesn't know how to do their budget.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And, and there was, people greatly underestimated how much Mike did for that board.
Is this, is this the first year? Did, did Mike's term end last May?
Yes.
So, this is the first budget cycle without Mike involved in that?
Yes.
Okay, that's, explains some of the turbulence.
Yeah, and, 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 you know, she's, she's not wrong, but if I had known, I would've been happy to sit down and help her.
Yeah.
Submit a budget and then yell at me for not teaching her how to submit a budget was inappropriate.
Did she reach out to Mike? 'Cause I would.
I have no idea. I, from what I understand, that there's little communication between the two of them.
Okay, 'cause from what I know of Mike, I would be very, I'd be surprised if he said he didn't have time to help if, if he were asked, but.
I, I would also.
I am no, no, you're right, he's under no obligation, but he just strikes me as the guy who would help, but.
Yeah, so, I mean, I mean, it's, it's kinda piddling on the size of our budget, but I would probably drop it to like 132, to where it's only a 10% increase, just base it off of like standard economic, like 9.8% type thing, just 'cause I think it is a little excessive.
I'm gonna have to find their email with the detail and send it to you, because it's not, it's not popping up, and I have, because of the way the online outlook works and the aliases, you know, you get your.
I know you sent, I know you forwarded to me, 'cause I remember seeing it, but it didn't have a lot of, or no, the one you're looking for, you didn't forward to me, so.
No, I don't think I forwarded, I know I forwarded it to AdCom, because they, I sent, every time I got an email from anybody with budget information in it, I forwarded it to Jeff and to Michelle, and even before I read it, it said, "Budget?", poof, off it went. And then I resent them, every single one of them, because there was some confusion about where they went. Transfer station. And I actually sent them, is this where they put all that information? All right, I got it, 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 I got it. There's notes on, on the budget that they sent us, so I'll forward that to the three of you. Don't discard the message, don't just ignore my chunky rest, you stupid computer. It's a touch everything on this, it's a touchscreen, and it's just, not clean, nasty, all right. There's Brad.
Uh, yeah.
There's Heather. There's Tom, and off you go. Poof! Oh, I didn't send it to your home email. I sent it to your Sullivan email.
That's fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so now you have their budget with their notes on the side.
And then it seems like the Board of Health also wants to hold a, looks like, I'm gonna guess, an annual hazardous waste day, and they want funding to do that, 'cause I think that's actually done through the North Brookfield Transfer Station, and the FIB just gets us access to their hazardous waste day.
Well, you know, it's interesting, 'cause they, they don't, that I can see have money in their budget to do that this year, but it's taking place this year.
No, I suspect they're just funding it out of the expenses line, which I.
I hope they have enough money.
Well, yes, they, that would be, that would be a valid question.
Mm-hmm.
Where are we on transfer station expenses? They are 68% expended as of the most recent expenditure report, um, from the 30th.
Oh, that's not bad, so they're still at 30%, and they've got three months to go, so.
And so, so they're, they're doing okay.
It sounds like they're on track. However, they still have to pay whatever it is that it comes up for, for this glorious hazardous waste day, which they budgeted five grand for, for next year.
Mm-hmm. And I, my understanding is that, they were discussing this at the meeting I was at, and they, there were still fees to the residents to drop stuff off. That 5,000 was just to get us, like, allowed to drop stuff off, and there was, a fee was still charged.
Come on.
Yeah?
There were fees based on how much was dropped off. There was, if it was under, I think, 10 gallons, there was no fee, and then it stepped up, the fee stepped up.
Oh, the, the, the.
Also, there was a base freebie, and then if you exceeded the base freebie, you had to pay?
Right.
Okay, that's, that's entirely consistent. I may not have that objection while they had that discussion.
All right. So, those were your Board of Health questions. Do you have other questions, or?
I have a question. Recreation, on their expenses, you commented, you had a comment in here about their revolving account?
Yes, they have thousands of dollars in their revolving account. What are they doing with 8,500?
Um, I don't know off the top of my head.
I checked with Lori, she said they normally expend what, most of what's in their revolving account, but, you know, I couldn't find a town meeting where an article for a revolving account. So, I'm assuming that they fall under a different law, and that they don't have to be revoted anywhere like the others.
Mm-hmm.
But I don't know what they, I don't know what they spend that on, but everything's gone up. I mean, they could be using that to help with the field, and then the revolving account, when the kids pay their fees to play in a sport, it goes toward the equipment and things of that nature. This might be.
That might be how they're paying for the dugout.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, and that makes sense. I mean, I don't, it's not a huge amount that they're asking for, to, to, you know, fix a few things up, I guess.
Yeah, I would, I would be curious to know what the, what the, what expenditures that the money the town gives does cover from the Recreation Committee.
Let me see.
So, I could have one question.
Can we, can we ask them for some insight into?
I'll just pull a report tomorrow out of the, out of the system. I'll just.
Even better, thank you.
I'll read the file.
So, the Board of Appeals wages, you said that this is a stipend for one member?
So, what happened was, I had a very in-depth conversation with the Board of Health, with the zoning Board of Appeals Chair, explaining a few things, that their revolving, they need a revolving account, that the residents shouldn't be footing the bill for advertising for people who come before them. They collect a fee, and then it goes into the general fund. It should go into a revolving account.
Okay.
So that they can then in turn pay the, the fees that are charged to have the hearing.
Right.
And then we talked about taking the money that they had for their clerk, and pooling it to grade an all-boards clerk position.
Right.
So, we did all that.
Yep.
And then, towards the middle of this year, the Chair came to me and said, I need to get paid, I do a lot of work. I'm like, I'm like a independent contractor. I went, no, you're a board member, and that money was shifted into the all-boards clerk, and you said you weren't gonna need it, and so that's why there's no money. He says, well, you can't do that. I said, it was on a town meeting, I didn't invent this, I didn't do this, I talked to you first. So, what he would like is for the board to get a stipend. Now, the board can vote to give that entire stipend to one member, they're doing most of the legwork, but it needs to be for the board, it can't be just designated for the Chair, but the board can vote to designate it for.
Chair.
The person that does the work.
Okay.
Just like the AdCom has a stipend in for a clerk.
Yeah.
Right? It's the same, it's the same principle.
Okay.
So, I just wanted you to be aware that this will most likely go to a single individual, who actually does do a lot.
Do a lot of work.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, but their expenses are going down, but we're gonna do a revolving account for them.
They have a revolving.
Oh, they have a revolving account.
Um, I haven't quite convinced them to use it yet, because it wasn't understood, but Sarah understands it, and she has caught the fees that are coming in, and has been putting it in the revolving account.
Great.
So.
Awesome.
Yeah.
So, the expenses and the general revenue will go down?
Hmm.
Both.
Well, they don't do a whole lot of hearings, and it's usually, you know, if they do five hearings, it's like.
I prefer that money to go to a revolving account than through the general fund, anyway.
Well, they can't get it out of the general fund, so that it has to go through a revolving account if they're gonna pay the bills with it, so.
Right, but then that way, as the fees come in, they can pay it and not worry about their, a limited expense account in the general, on the general budget.
Hey, what's our expenditure so far this year for municipal heating fuel? 'Cause I know it was outrageously expensive.
Yeah, but it was outrageously warm.
Yeah.
But most.
That's what I'm asking, actually.
You got it, Tom?
I'd have to find municipal heating fuel, that's probably in Town Hall.
No, it's not.
Down below.
It's actually in the 400s, within the 400s.
Municipal heating fuel, we are 42% expended, so.
We're actually doing pretty good.
6,200 out of, out of 14.5,000.
We're gonna need to shift some of that, because some of the other buildings have exceeded their electricity bills.
Yeah, electricity.
And they're out of money.
Yeah.
So, when May rolls around, we're gonna need to share some of that heating, 'cause it is heating, it's actually for their gas bills, it's for their utility and their electric.
Yeah.
Yeah. Municipal transfer, interdepartment, inter-account transfers open up on May 1st, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Reserve fund until then.
All right. Is there anything else that we need to cover before? Didn't we have an executive session on that?
We do, yes, it's for the contract and for a law case.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, library wages.
Library wages, yes!
We specifically intend to set that as something we want to talk about today.
Yeah.
Brad, did you, did you get any information from the library trustees about the rationale behind their numbers?
I do for Brenda, um, maybe Kelly knows the answer. The assistant, is that two or one?
It's one.
Yeah.
They created a position, I'm careful how I put this. The person was already doing all of the work, and the assistant director's job description. They just wanted to, basically.
Rebrand.
Rebrand what she was doing to reflect the work being done. Um, I don't know where they pulled the wages from, I have no idea where that came from. But, because it's a brand-new position, it's not in the, the line items, right? It's, it has to be created through an article, like all other new positions. It has to get put in the bylaw, because we're not allowed to pay anybody for a position that doesn't exist in the bylaw, which is why we had to add the treasurer and the accountant and the police chief to it last year, because it was omitted accidentally when they redid it for the, um, when they graded everybody.
Yeah.
So, it's being created in the, in an article, and it will be funded in an article.
Would the intention be to fund it out of raisin appropriate?
It has to be, it's salary, it's wages, yeah.
I, I, my understanding was that for new positions, the first year of the position could be funded out of free cash.
Well, it could. If you wanna do that, that's fine, we've got the free cash to do it. I think I've got 50 grand left in free cash.
I don't, I, given, given that this is a no need, I would lean towards funding it out of raisin appropriate, simply because that's where it's gonna be going forward. We might as well show the hit on the budget now, and not sort of say, we're creating this position, and show a hit on the budget until next year. That's, that's a little, that's not as transparent as we could be.
Mm-hmm. So, we'll create the position, and then we'll.
Okay, so I guess, I guess my question is, is one, is, are the library trustees, is somebody from the library prepared to?
Yes.
Okay.
They've sent us information?
Have they?
No, this was what they had handed out when I was there for their budget meeting.
And so, what?
You wanna share that?
So, it says, and I guess this is where my question's gonna be, it says, "American Public Library Trustees Have Legally Entered Into A Contract With Director Brenda Matterville." Are they allowed to?
Yes, they are, they have their own set of laws.
So, there's nothing we can really do?
Yeah, you can vote no. Yeah, you can vote no.
We cannot fund the contract, we cannot fund the salary.
Right, so it's the same thing like with the school, like you just don't fund it, and now they gotta figure it out.
Yeah.
Do you wanna read it?
If you just tilt it my way, I can, I'm looking over my glasses, cause it's far enough away I can read it. All right, so basically, looks like they did the equivalent of a salary survey.
Then I have a whole bunch of other emails with other salary surveys.
Okay.
You know, and kind of what they had talked about too was, you know, she's not acting just as a librarian, she does a lot also with the maintenance, you know, and overseeing anything with the.
That's what a library director does, that's part of their job description.
Actually, in a lot of towns, there's a public works department that deals with.
Not in towns this size, there is not.
That's true.
Absolutely not. And the salary survey I sent you compared same-sized towns, same number of hours, same education, same public served, same-size budgets. So, there's, that's just part of being a library director in a small town. And she does do a lot of work, and she does an excellent job.
And she was also comparing, let me see if I can find, she was also comparing herself to other, I remember, just off the top of my head, she was comparing herself to the tax collector, what the tax collector's making. Let me see if I can find anything else here.
But she's not a tax collector, that's not apples and apples.
No, but I mean, that was part of the reasoning, was comparing.
The tax collectors make responsible for millions and millions and millions of dollars.
So I, I mean, I don't know what you wanna do here, we can print this stuff out?
So the only thing that I'm gonna have give an opinion on, because whatever you guys decide for her, for her salary is what, you have all the information, so now it's your call.
Yep.
But you should not add the longevity to the base pay. Give her the longevity, but separate it out from the base pay, because if you don't do that.
Right, the COLA. And the longevity will grow.
The longevity impacts the COLA. And if you do it every single year, you're double increasing that salary every year, which is, is not something that we do for any other, any other.
Does that mean we need a separate COLA line for every, for every department? I'm sorry, a double longevity, a separate longevity line for every department?
No. So I have a warrant article that has total, I have a spreadsheet that has everybody's year they started, when they, when they meet the longevity, and at what point it shifts itself over as the years go up. So, the total for the longevity, and then we pay them based on the spreadsheet.
But what about, but what about funding? I mean, that spreadsheet will.
The article funds for this year. This year, we need $18,000 for longevity.
So, so in future budgets, the, this year's, this year's, the warrant article this year will establish it on an ongoing basis, the longevity concept. So in future budgets, how will we fund that longevity structure that we approve, that we expect to approve in the coming ATM?
So if you can, if you decide to continue to provide longevity, because it is not a bylaw, it was part of the personnel handbook, subject to funding. So there might be years where there isn't any. I don't know, I don't know how you're gonna wanna handle that.
I suspect it's gonna be hard to pull it back.
But you should, I would say we have one line item with the longevity, that has the total, and then we just use the spreadsheet going forward, because it's gonna change every year.
I'm good with that, it, that just means someone's gonna, someone's gonna have to go through and prepare that number, whether it's, they do it all themselves or they tell the department heads, "Let me know who you got and what."
No, I went through the payroll system, and I pulled everybody's beginning dates, and I plugged everybody in.
So it should be, so as long as someone, as long as.
It should automatically update every year.
Hires and quits are added and appropriated appropriately, that that can be tracked on a central basis.
Yes.
And not pushed out to the department heads.
Yes.
Good, no?
Cause they don't need any extra.
I agree.
So how does this work with the library? Do you need to say yes or no to it, is that?
It's just like any other budget, you give your recommendation, that this is what we're gonna fund for a salary, these are the wages. If, if their contract, I haven't, I haven't, they, they signed a contract, so they're on the hook for it. That's, that's between them and the library director. But like any other budget item, if they, if the town votes no, then it's no, and if you recommend yes, then it's yes.
Why didn't the library trustees coordinate this? I mean, maybe they did, and I just wasn't here for it.
They never contacted us.
Right.
Brenda did bring me the contracts for herself, and they, they did go to the Personnel Board about the, the new position.
Don't do that.
Yeah. Yeah, we had a meeting about the new position, and it made sense to actually get.
To take a salary and go from 50 to 70, I feel like.
That we never discussed.
That should have coordination, I feel like, with the.
But they don't have to do that, that's the thing. They've got their own set of laws.
They can say 150.
And when I said to them, "The library trustees have the authority to enter into the contract with Brenda," but I don't know, because, so the trustees hire the director, and then the director hires everybody else. I don't know if Brenda has the legal authority to enter, to bind the town in a contract with the, for a contracted assistant. And they reached out to the state, and the state said that they do.
The State Library Board said that?
Yes.
So it's almost like.
It would surprise me that.
It's almost like trustees with the school.
And it's very similar to the school, yeah. And they, actually, they, they have their own set of laws. So, any, like the library, they have full and complete control over the library. The Board of Selectmen cannot say, "You cannot fix this, or you need to fix that." The library trustees are, have complete and total control over the library.
And that's, and that's not, that's, that's a state law factor, not a factor of how Brooklyn set up its government with.
Correct. That's, that's the state trying to basically.
Protect the libraries.
Protect libraries and schools.
Yeah, from political meddling. I can see why that would happen.
Yeah. So, I'm aligned with what you did, where it actually meets, cause, cause here's the thing, I hate to put it this way. This sounds really bad. Not, I know our population that comes to town, they are not.
No matter what you say, it's gonna go.
It's gonna, it's gonna pass. Right. If we, if we, if we try to put an ix-nay on that, there's no, that is not, that is not the hill I wanna die on.
No, no. And again, you know, so if you add.
Also, probably, that is, with, with all of that library has done and all of that group has done this down, that, that's, if that's what the trustees are thinking is the right thing to do to maintain the level of service that we've had in that library, you know what?
So this, their budget is not actually complete there because of the warrant article?
Yeah.
For the Assistant Director.
So they're still gonna have an assistant plus the Assistant Director?
Well, there's the Director, there's the library assistants, right? Library assistant wages.
Okay.
I don't know, you know what, let me, let me bop over to their spreadsheet.
Let's just make sure we actually understand.
I know there's a warrant article to create the position, that's the first thing. Library, library.
Well, I feel like, and I, I don't have confirmation, but this is my assumption, I think she did the 18,000, because if you took 14,000, she used a COLA figure of like 8%, which brings it to like 15,000. And then the 3,000 that was at Sprague and the utilities, when that got taken away, she just took the 3,000, add it to the 15, 18.
For library expenses?
Do you follow what I said?
Yeah, and actually, she has to do that, and that's the only bad thing about taking the utilities out of the library budget.
That's right.
Is because, is because under state law, their budget has to increase some set amount every year. And it's fine, it just means they'll be able to buy more materials and stuff like that. But it just, understand the fact that we can't, we can't save the money that was in library utilities, because, because of the way that law is written, the budget has to go up a certain percentage of.
Yeah, I have the formula, it's completely beyond my math skills.
So under that scenario, you should have just left the, just like you leave the, cause the utilities.
We can, we can pop the utilities back in there.
We don't take the utilities for the school, right?
No, we don't.
So the utilities should have been left probably at the library.
Question, isn't that, isn't it the total library budget that has to grow, and therefore, if we reduce the utilities by $3,000, but other lines go up $3,000, then that's a net zero change?
Mm-hmm.
And so therefore, we may, we may be okay, as long as the, as long as the bottom line number for the library meets state requirements, they, they may not micromanage.
It may not matter, because it may be that, I hate to put it this way, with the library director increase, they're gonna more than handle the increase, but I, I don't remember what part of the library budget needs to, whether wages are included.
I have, I've, I've never heard anything about the library budget having to go up, but I do know that the.
I absolutely, we have revoted at town meetings, God is my witness, like a dollar fifty.
No, but that, no, but we have revoted, no, we have revoted books, videos, and periodicals. I know there's a state law that says the books, videos, and periodicals line of a library must be at least a certain proportion of the, of the average of the last three years' total budget.
Yeah.
And we have, we have revoted that, I know we've revoted that, I have no argument there.
Yeah.
But I do not recall us revoting other lines in the budget.
So.
But then again, I forget where I left my keys this morning, so.
Yeah. Just trust me, it's not just that.
Maybe we can ask the, like, maybe we can ask Kelly to, to look into that and, and the library to provide.
Yeah, yeah. I thought I already did, because I got it, and I sent it over to you guys, I thought, but I'll send it again.
Cause I know on the advisory committee, we'd always like going around going, "Is this, is this right? Do we understand it right? Are we applying it right?"
Yeah.
To make sure.
It feels like every year that I was on advisory, we had to do some damn thing with the library budget, so.
Yeah, and it's, I remember the books, videos, and periodicals. I think it's, it has to be like 19 and a half percent of the average of the last three years.
Yep.
Is, I'll go, I'll go look it up, cause every year I'd ask Brenda, it's like, "What's that again?"
Yep.
Well, and I'd like to see them use extra money to do whatever they need to keep updating that and expanding.
Yeah. Yep. So.
Yeah, I don't have the funding for that, it is in the budget, it's not in the warrant. So, so the funding for the assistant, the Assistant Director is lumped in with the library assistants.
Okay.
It's not a separate line item.
Okay. I thought that.
I'll confirm with Brenda to make sure, but I, I just, I have her budget in here that she gave to me, so it improves her, her salary. But again, I mean, I'm not saying don't pay her any less, I'm just saying, don't put that longevity in that base pay.
Yep, I'm, I'm fine with that, and I think that that's an appropriate detail, if that makes any sense.
Kelly, can we ask the library for a, for the assistant wages? Can we just break that out and understand? Because I, there were.
I have a copy of the contract upstairs, which probably has it broken out.
That's fine. Mostly, I wanna know how much of that, of that 13.94% increase is going to the new Assistant Director position, and how much of that is raises for the, the remainder of the assistants? Cause I, I just wanna make sure that the, that, the assistants, not the Assistant Director, but the just Assistant Librarians are getting a COLA consistent with the rest of the town.
Well, she put in an 8.9% increase for them.
So we may want, so we may wanna shave that down some to give, to give the assistants a consistent rate.
We just need to, we just need to do a bottom, we just need to do a bottom-up evaluation on that line, is, is what you're saying.
Yeah, but they don't have to give it to you, remember? And nobody has come forward with it except for Al, not a single department.
Kelly, as long as we know what the, what they're proposing for the Assistant Director's wages, we can back the rest up.
Do we know what their, do we know what their pay rates are?
I can, I can go through the Harper system and find everybody. So the problem is, people work for multiple departments, so.
Yeah, but the library, then we don't have that problem.
No, that's true, but I can, I can go through the library and pull a report and see what everybody's hourly wages are.
Yeah, let's just figure it out.
It, it wouldn't be fair to the, if we're considering a, a certain COLA for most of the town employees, then I think that that should apply to the library employees also that are not getting.
Yeah, that's why when I, I took their total request, and I just popped it, one at 3%.
Yeah, cause for some reason, the custodian wages are at.
Well, that's because they added two hours a week to his pay, to his job.
Ah, okay.
And, and the two hours a week weren't calculated into the budget last year.
Okay.
His pay raise was, or her pay raise was, cause that's a woman, her pay raise was, but the extra hours weren't, so this is a correction.
Oh, that's a correction, okay.
That's a correction.
I wasn't understanding that, thank you.
So it's 16.81 times 3% for the custodian, plus two additional hours times 52.1 weeks, and that's where I came up with the 11,000.
With that number, got it, all right.
And then, is there any benefit to having Saturday holiday vacation, the Saturday holiday vacation line? My understanding is, is that wages?
It is wages, and there's no reason to have it split up. It, I don't know what the historical reason for that is, but it does not need to be split out.
It's always been like that since I've been involved in the town budget, and just, my thought is that if we're, it may, it may make, it may make sense to find out if there's a need for it, and if not, collapse it down.
Mm-hmm.
Probably once they put it in there, they didn't wanna take it out, because then it becomes, you have to explain the percentage.
It becomes muddy, yeah.
It's like.
It's like the OT hours in the PD, right? He's got a separate line item for his OT and part-time people.
I, I think, I think for that, that's because you wanna understand how much you're paying for OT and versus the, the regular wages. I, I can kinda see that.
Yeah, I can, I see that as well.
This, this seems less necessary, unless, I'm not sure there's a reason they did it, I just don't think, I'm just not sure that reason is compelling anymore.
The weird thing to that is, they're asking for a 30% increase in their holiday vacation, their holidays, they don't have, they have one full-time person there.
Mm-hmm.
So whose vacation pay is that? Because Brenda's salary, she's not hourly.
Right, so, I mean.
Who's giving pay for vacation time? Nobody there is full-time.
Maybe they want more Saturday staff.
Except one.
You know, that might actually be some of, it might actually be summer vacation, like all their programs, like that may be, actually be more, just hours that they pay for their summer programming.
Right.
No, it is absolutely a wage. Anything that's 5110 is wage.
I understand it's a.
Oh, 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 oh.
Saying that they have to staff the.
Oh, oh, okay, yeah, I missed that, sorry.
It's more like it's, it's like event, if that makes any sense. That may be how it came in, and it's just, they've been there so long, nobody does.
But in that sense, maybe we just wanna tighten up the description of that line and, to better reflect it, or, or at least, at least we'll understand what it's for.
Can we move on? Because it's like, it's not, it's not worth seven minutes of discussion over, over the title on that line, that's been there for the last 25 years. So, go ahead.
For the library, what is the important value for the Director's wages?
For the Director's wages, we're recommending 70,500, then, then have longevity director as a discrete line for 1,500. So we're gonna honor the contract that was signed with the trustees in our recommendation, but we're gonna make it clear that the longevity stipend should be as a discrete payment and not as part of the base salary.
Was there a longevity stipend in the fiscal year '23 budget?
No, there was no longevity in '23 for anyone.
Wow, that's a huge raise.
It is a huge raise. What's that?
Eighty-eight thousand, seventy thousand plus eighteen.
No, it's not 18,000.
Oh, I thought it was eighteen thousand.
No, fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred. Fifteen hundred.
Yeah, got this.
You were looking at the library expenses as 18,000. It's still a huge raise, but I understand where they're coming from with it.
For consistency, are we gonna put longevity for everyone in the budget, or are we just gonna do longevity for everyone through the warrant article?
It's only in here so that we can show that we're paying Brenda for both. I'm not gonna put longevity in for every single person in every single department, I wanna do it as one line item, and I want Brenda's to go in one warrant article with everybody else's. But for this particular year, just to show that we're actually honoring that, I put it in as a line item. I think it would be insane to ask the, to, to separate it out into every single budget.
I, I think.
I mean, it's not insane that we split the one one.
I think not spreading it across the budget is the right decision.
Yeah.
Just my thought is, would it make sense to ask the library to adjust their request to take the longevity out, and then with the.
Add it to the line item.
And with the understanding it would go in the warrant article, and that way, everyone gets treated the same way.
Same way, yeah.
I can do that.
Yeah, let's do that.
And with the, with the understanding that that way, it's like, the recommendation would be consistent with what they asked for, and yet, the longevity is consistently applied across the entire town.
Yep.
I got bags of them.
I had some on the desk.
I'll take one of those.
I have them in my car.
All right, so have you actually voted on anything? Have you decided anything in this budget yet?
No, we've, we've had a lot of discussion, we haven't decided anything.
Do you have any editing as we go, so that we?
Okay, good, 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 good.
Yeah, I.
Then we could just fill it as a mandate.
Yeah, yeah, and okay, and like I said, you're for.
Voting, I've got a couple more questions, and I need to dig into around technology and utilities. I mean, I'd like to, I'd like to sort of put down everything we discussed and agreed on so far.
Okay.
But I'd like a little more time to bring a couple of questions to Kelly on, on some of the details.
All right, I'm okay with not voting it tonight.
The, the utilities, do you have a question on the utilities?
I, I just need to go through the utilities and, and see.
You, I sent you the utility tab.
I, I have, yes, I have the numbers, I just haven't had the chance to sit down and look at them.
Yeah.
Because I've been on call two of the last three weeks.
So, so what I sent you is what we spent last year. Um, the contract for the electricity kicked in, and just as Beth predicted, it's a penny more per kilowatt hour than what they're going to change it to, because everybody's ditching National Grid, and so they went, oh, well, we're not going to charge you thirty-three cents per kilowatt hour anymore, we're going to charge you fourteen cents, and we locked in at fifteen, but.
When it goes back up again, we'll still be at fifteen.
Yes.
I am actually okay with that, although it is funny that I'm right.
Yeah, I know, and you were laughing, you're like, it's a win-win for the town. We either win with the contract, or they get their energy reduced anyway. So, um, so I need to solidify some of those numbers with, with Lori, so that we don't underestimate. But I'm, I am pretty sure that we're not going to exceed what we spent last year, because the rates were so much higher last year than what they are now.
Yeah, and mostly, I just want to go through and see how much it's, how, how the numbers are moving, and how much they're, how much, how much things are going up. It's like, I just need to wrap my head around it.
Yeah, things are actually going down.
Oh, good.
They're going down, and we've locked in for gas, and we've locked in for, so this, so electricity is locked at fifteen cents per kilowatt hour. So, and that started February, so we've only got one month of showing what it's going to be, but it's locked. So, it's not going to go up unless we need to use a lot more, which means it would be really, really dark out, but longer than usual.
And, and, and you're, you're working on fixing a schedule Z for?
That's been done, Lori, Lori fixed that. When I was first here, she had it fixed like within a few weeks.
Okay, and so, how many more years do we have on this?
We, we figured out it's like thirty-three-year contracts, there's some crazy contract where you're paying double the electric bill for the rest of your life. I'll be, I'll be well-retired by the time that contract is done. It's, it's literally like a twenty-year contract.
Yeah, but I think we're ten years into the twenty-year contract.
Right, I'll be retired.
What do you mean, what solar farm? The one over at the house?
You have a net metering contract.
Oh, right, I forgot about that.
Which you pay for, electricity you're already paying for.
But then we also get paid back.
So, I didn't realize, so that solar farm's on our property?
You don't get back what you put in. They have like, put all the credits on the police department.
Well, yeah, that's, but that's.
And they will not fix that. They are going to never pay your electric bill.
What, the police are never going to pay your electric bill because they get all the credits?
They got all the credits, they've got like a fifteen thousand dollars worth of credit.
So, National Grid won't move it?
Nope, they refuse to move it. The lawyers tried to get them to move it, and they absolutely refused.
Can we just have KP send them a letter? Is it worth it to try to move it?
No, I don't think that they, I don't think that it's worth the money, because they're not going to, and they have all the power.
Well, they have to, if it's not metering, then it's your own entity.
I'll talk to Lori. So, I thought they wouldn't talk to Lori, because we couldn't prove that she was a signature on our accounts. So, I think the action there is to actually get somebody authorized to speak for the town, and I think if you contact them as the contracting officer for the town, or for the purchasing officer for the town, that they may be obligated to speak to you.
Okay.
Um, I did want to ask about, and we don't have to discuss it tonight, but do we know, are the numbers that are in, that were in the version that you sent us, it said waiting for the bond in the version of this that you sent to us regarding the debt, do we have final numbers on that?
I asked Amy for that the other day, and I think there was one increase in the debt.
But in terms of like fire truck?
But it's not, it's not a substantial increase, and we don't need some of the other money, so I think it's going to wash.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I mean, I'd like to know what like, what's in there does, I don't feel like is going to be right once we issue the bond, or once we get the bond issued?
It's issued, it's done, it's issued, yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, if we can just make sure that whatever's.
Well, let me see what I got from that email. What's wrong with the mail, Kelly? I love having my laptop, this is great. Debt, all right. Because I sent her what I had in the spreadsheet and said, just double-check this, make sure these numbers are right.
Okay.
Matter of fact, I did that to a couple, I sent it to the school, I actually sent it to Deb Boyd. Hi, remember me? I know you fancy any of the new superintendent, but I, I trust your numbers.
You're the only one that we trust with the math, so.
Pretty much, could you double-check my numbers?
That's great.
So, she did. Revised auction proposal, no. Warrant article. Oh, we got some warrant articles asking for a reason appropriate today.
Okay.
What's the deadline for the warrant?
It's the twenty-fourth of April.
Okay.
For, for them to submit?
Right, so we.
Which we can fund some of it with, because we're not going to be funding the culverts. That's a hundred thousand dollars for Green Street Project and the culvert that we're going to do with Harper money.
Yep.
So, we don't need to have those warrant articles, so we could fund some of these requests. Like, one is the road construction.
Yeah.
She's asking for twenty-five thousand for road construction.
Yeah.
Nine thousand for line painting because of the central street, and Mike's asking for nine thousand for a new server for the police station. What was the other thing he wanted?
Do we have free cash certified?
I have, six hundred and fourteen thousand.
It's just certified back in November.
And that's a piece of law, that's okay.
Oh, yeah, it was actually certified before that, but then we, we found something else that happened, so we had to certify it. Sorry, make sure you're dropping.
That's fine.
The warrant articles can be funded through a, an account transfer, free cash, if free cash is available, and it can be funded from reason appropriate.
Yes, or lending.
Or bar, you're right.
Bar, yeah.
Or bar, yeah, sorry, not lending, bar.
Mike has asked for a copier like this one for his office, because it's more convenient.
Are you serious?
So, no, no.
Now, I mean, for, for his own health, just to get his butt up out of the chair, I think he's.
Well, it's also so that Jeff and Nick don't have to walk out here, you know? But his printer is garbage, it's absolutely garbage. So, we own this one outright. If we shift that in to his office, and we lease a brand-new one, that's, that's just another way of doing it.
Okay.
But he definitely needs a printer, his birth certificates and his, and his official documents look like garbage. They look like somebody got them. They're not as nice as they could be, they're not, they don't should be. You know, so, he does need a new printer, so that was one of the things he asked for, he asked for. A new voting machine, which is about five grand.
Oh, the click-o-matic vote things for town meeting?
No, a new machine to count the.
A new tabulator for town elections?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Why? It's the one that, I mean, usually they run, it runs through the ballots without any issue, I mean.
I have no idea, it's a model that's not being supported anymore.
Okay, that's possible, but.
They change so quickly.
Well, the only reason why I'm even challenging it is because of the fact that it's been so reliable, if that makes any sense, it's like.
Yeah, and I, I don't know why he's asking, but I think it has something to do with it not being supported.
Okay.
But it's something you may want to ask, but we have free cash for that.
Yeah.
If that's what he wants. What else did I get? I read.
I like the scan drive machine. I was like, I like the scan drive machine, it's, I trust it better than the law to the new voting machines, that's all.
I think it's the brain, he just needs a new brain for it.
Ah, okay.
And again, we can always ask him to tell us why he wants a new one. Because I just told everybody, just get me a warrant article, just get me what you need, and then we'll decide whether it's reason appropriate, transfer from available funds, or free cash.
Is there a town hall, like, improvement budget?
Yep, it's, it's in there, it's, it's, they're asking for the same thing they had before, fourteen.
Just for police.
There's a lot of funding.
So, where are they with the chimneys here? Did they get money from AdCom?
The chimneys are, yes, they did, and both chimneys are being repaired and rebuilt, and it's scheduled for the third week of April.
Okay.
To have them fit in and do it.
I'm just wondering if other money should be added to that for like, I know, repointing and.
No, I asked Amy Goldby for money to repoint as well. I literally asked for repointing money.
Well, because when I was downstairs with Don Taft, I mean, those columns are going to need to.
Well, that's not repointing, that's, that's shifting, lifting, and replacing the columns, which would need to be engineered, and it's, it's a tedious process. I, I've lifted a building of this age and size already, and, and it was, it was an interesting adventure for my treasurer to be sitting in her office and me, as they were jacking up the building, to pull out the thing and put it back in.
Okay, so I, I have a question. Do we need to do the executive session? Did you, did you need to have a discussion before?
We do need to have a, I'd like to have an executive session. I meet with them on the thirteenth.
And you don't meet again until the twentieth?
Okay, well, could we just set up a meeting for like, the eleventh, Tuesday at lunch? Does that work for you guys? Because I'm just going to admit, I'm not.
Oh, no, I am burnt, so I'm totally burnt. I can still go, but.
Yes, but we know you have this longevity of meeting quality that some of us don't.
I've got a very sick dog, he's going to be up every next Sunday.
So.
I did, I did contract negotiations with another, with a company in Mexico.
Oh, my God.
Just a quick question, what's the procedure for sending the warrants to the AdCom to review?
As soon as I have them, as soon as the warrant is completed.
So, all of them, you want, you're going to deliver them all at once?
I'm going to email you a copy of the warrant, the select, it closes on the twenty-fourth. The selectmen meet that Thursday to review it, it goes to town council the following Friday, and you'll get it at the same time.
Same time as?
As town council, you'll get it on Friday, yeah, once it's finished and voted.
Kelly, from the schedule, the, the warrant, the art, the warrant closes on the twenty-fourth, or at least articles for the warrant close on the.
Yes, they have to be in by the twenty-fourth.
And so, and when would the, when would we be reviewing them?
You should be reviewing them, hold on, hold on, wait, wait, please. On the twenty-fourth, you'll be reviewing them on the fourth.
On May fourth, okay.
Yeah.
Because at some point, we should also, we're, we're in April now, so we should also consider a, when we're going to review, or have a joint session with AdCom and review the operating budget. I mean.
If you want.
We typically do that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Are we also, are you, once we have a, a budget, are you planning on doing a public hearing again?
I was going to do that, if I can fit it into the schedule. I am so far behind because I've been so sick, and, and I'm really struggling to catch up. So, there's a lot, there's a lot of day-to-day things that I haven't been doing because.
I wish I went to it last year. I think if we did do it, let's make sure it's, I don't know how it was ever, I didn't even.
I was ecstatic, there were like seven people there. That's the most I've ever had turn up to any of them ever, and I've been doing them for like seven years, and I was thrilled with how many people went.
What date, what date did we put on the calendar for town meetings?
June first. You can always kick it back if you want, if that's too soon. I, I picked that, I know it was a very aggressive timeline, but I also realized that by doing it that way, we will be as prepared as possible, and we can possibly do it that date, but there's also a window of shift, if you need to. I figured I would do the budget presentation two weeks before the meeting.
Which would be, yeah, the fifteenth of May.
Oh, you want to do it, you, where did, how soon did you do it last time?
Two weeks before the meeting.
Oh, you did, okay.
I think so, yeah, I think.
Yeah, that, that sounds right, it was mid-May.
And how long was that?
Yeah, so it would be like the eighteenth or something. I don't know, last, I don't know, you were there, do you remember?
I think it was about an hour.
I don't know.
You might not just do it an hour before the meeting?
Because people need to know what's going on with the budget, so they can digest it, and that's the whole point behind it, is that when they come to the meeting, they've had their opportunity to ask all their questions.
So, hopefully, those.
And, and ask, asking them to attend a hearing and then go straight to town meeting puts a lot of ask on the citizens in their town.
Yeah, and they've got kids, that's too long.
It is too long.
I just put them in a side room with a movie playing on a computer.
Nice.
Perfect, I love it, I love it. So, like around the eighteenth or nineteenth or something, I still have to book it with the school. Did you book the town meeting with the school?
Which school? The school or?
We can't do it out of town anymore, all the COVID things have expired, you can't have a town meeting out of town.
So, let's do it, let's do it the eighteenth. Can we actually post our selectmen's meeting over there that day as well, start with the public hearing, that's the budget meeting?
Yeah, sure.
And then, we'll do the rest.
If it's available, I got to check with Kathleen, but yeah.
But if it's available, the eighteenth is normally our selectmen's meeting day. Why don't we just do it as a public hearing associated with the selectmen's meeting?
Yeah, joint with advisory, because they'll all be there.
Yeah.
I will be playing Pink Floyd. In the beginning, Money was the theme song, people walked in, dum, 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 ka-ching, ka-ching.
Okay, Mr. Ben.
I have a little problem with the schedule of not getting the warrants until they're going out to determine.
Okay, why?
Does not give us any time to perform a due-year advising consent. We got no time to review before closing.
You have a month and a half.
What's that?
You have a month and a half.
You'll have a month and a half before town meeting. The review and consent isn't whether it's going to go on the warrant or not. It's whether it goes in the warrant or not is up to the selectmen. What the advisory committee advises on is whether they recommend that the townspeople vote for it or not. So, you have six weeks from the warrant to decide whether you think the people should vote for it or not.
Yeah, six weeks is.
But you guys don't determine whether it gets on the warrant.
I understand, it's just the method of filing it's included.
Okay, so.
But I think you bring that up during the town meeting, don't you?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's, that's part of the motion, it's not part of the warrant. So, it doesn't, it, so, how, like, so, so typically speaking, and this is one thing that I do want us to do, is for, is that I know sometimes we cherry pick and determine.
Funding method?
The funding method, right in the language. Let's, let's use what we used to use, which is the.
All three?
Everything is all three.
And then we'll decide at the meeting?
And we do it in the motion.
You can do that, sure, sure.
And then that way, that way, we have.
We have my whole warrant.
We have, what's that?
No, just being goofy, I'm getting bungee.
Okay, but that way, it doesn't, and it's tied in it, and we can, and we have the time between the, the writing and, and town meeting to make sure everybody's on board with regards to the funding source. Okay, so, that was easy. Where my statement's from.
Will, will we want to, will the advisory committee need to communicate its recommendations by mid-May so that they can be included in the printed warrant?
Yep.
Okay, so they'll, so they'll have.
Speaking of the printed warrant, how did you get it printed?
Magic. I will find the vendor and tell you who it was, they were in Dudley.
Oh, they were in Dudley?
They, yes, they were in Dudley, right down, not far past, you were past the Big Way going towards Connecticut, and then you cross, just past the Big Way, you cross the river, just a little ways up there, I think.
Okay. I used BT Graphics one year in Charlton, and they were great, and fast.
They were.
Because I, I was wondering how you decided how many and where, how to mail them, because. I asked Mike for a, a list, a, a label list of the registered voters in town, and there are two thousand five hundred and twenty-six of them.
So, advisory, because if you have a meeting posted.
So, if we send them to each household, but then we're going to need them.
If they're weekly, they only go, they, they, they post every week. It's a rolling post. But, one thing I would like to, to do is that I was not able to get anything done in time to send out to the town last year in my role on, on AdCom, but I would like to get a summary of the budget out to all the mailing, all the mailing addresses in town.
We don't have any money in the budget to do that, Tom. We used money to send out the information for the special town meeting, and ate half of the budget for mailing out these things. There's no money to do that. We did just get a bulk mailing license, so, but the bulk mailing for all the town residents is, and if it's just a flyer, is six hundred and fifty-eight dollars in postage. And that's two thousand mailings, and that'll hit every household.
That is, what I had in mind was, I don't know.
Basically, a flyer that lists the warrant articles probably.
I was thinking something that maybe eleven by seventeen, folded eight and a half by eleven, fold it three ways, and if that counts as a flyer, that should be enough space to get it out.
How about this? How about if you have it done and have it printed, we put. How about this, how about if you have it done and have it printed, we put something out there that people can pick it up at the town hall if they so choose?
Well, we've tried to do that before, it's just I think that a lot of people don't come across it.
Yeah.
And I've always liked the idea of pushing something out to everyone who lives in town. And again, not the whole warrant book, I don't think that's a lot of paper that people aren't going to use.
Yeah.
But I'd like to see if we could find a way to get something to people to at least let them know what's going on, maybe a summary of warrant articles with, and this is going to cost as much, this is personal personnel.
And this is your last day to register to vote to be, to vote at the town meeting?
Oh, that would be part of what we send out.
I feel like it would be...
I don't know how we're going to fund it, I don't know if we're going to get the money to do it.
$658 to do a flyer?
$658 to do one single mailing of an eight and a half by 11 piece of paper.
I feel like it would be cheaper to, I might claim it in lower taxes to go drive around and hand-deliver it to every house than it is to mail.
Actually, it would be. It's only 33 cents to mail.
Yeah.
With the bulk mailing.
Yeah.
But it can, it has to say, current resident, Brookfield.
We could find one person to do it in one or two days.
To go to 256 households?
Yeah.
I mean, 2,569 households?
That's a lot of stopping.
That's a lot of stopping.
And technically, it's illegal to drop it in the mailbox.
It is, it's a federal offense. Are you suggesting we commit federal offense?
No, I suggested put it at the front door.
Between the screen door.
Then you got to walk up to the front door, that's going to take a lot more time. I've gone door-to-door popcorn selling, it's a slow business.
Well, I'll see what I can do, I'll look at it and see what we can do, but...
Right, thank you.
We're already short-changed in getting the warrant books printed, so mailing them, I don't think is something that...
Yeah, I don't think we're going to mail, I don't think we should mail a warrant book. I do think we should mail some sort of communication of, here's the items that are going to be voted at town meeting, here's the date, here's the time.
Here's a map?
Here's a map.
So you can find the back of the building?
Yes.
Enough to get people so they know what's being discussed, they can be, and if they can look and say, "Oh, what's this?" And they can, and we tell them, and pick up a copy of the warrant at town hall for all the details.
Yep, or the library, put some of them at the library.
Can you put something together like that, or would you...
I'd be willing to help put something like that together.
Just throw it together a rough?
Yeah, I'll say, yeah.
And then I'll just put in some of the details.
With a placeholder for the warrant.
Just put a block here, say, "Budget summary here," blurb about where the vote is here, that kind of thing. Yeah, I can rough it up.
Yeah, so one other thing I wanted to ask you is, do you want to put, because the departments, and I'm going to ask the department heads this, well, it was my intention originally to put down exactly what you see here as the budget.
Yep.
Right, with AdCom's column in there as well. Do you want to put in what was requested by the departments? And the reason I'm asking is because they were under the premise that we were going to offer an 8.9% increase. And so it gives the appearance to people who don't know the details that they might be crazy and they might be trying to get more than when it was, it was an innocent attempt on their part to do that.
Well, I think what we can do is we can just, typically speaking, we have done a great job of it, but we do a statement upfront regarding the budget.
Yeah, and that's what it was based on, because I want the town to look at them like they're doing something greedy.
And I'm perfectly satisfied to stand up there and say the same thing that I said at the department head meeting, that, look, the department heads went with what we said a couple of years ago at town meeting, they voted the Cola Center, they put in, based off of the COLA, we've since had discussions, you know, both with the, you know, department heads and amongst ourselves to say, no, we're going to try to stabilize at 3% at least for the next three years. And I think the other pieces, and this is something for a follow-on budget discussion, do we, do we want to visit, at least look at what the cost impact would be about assuming some additional percentage of the...
I have that in a spreadsheet.
I'm sure you do, but I don't want to talk about it.
No, I know, I know, I know you don't. I have it split by 60, 65, 70, 75, and 80.
Yep, yep, and I think you emailed it to us as well, so...
Kelly, could we do something with the department heads and either ask them to assent to a reduction of their COLA request to 3% or to tell them we're planning to do that[1671.32]